Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 8:36. Just a quick item of housekeeping. Folks who are standing in the back or members of the public who wish to sit down. We're doing Employee of the Quarter awards today, and that's the reason why our gallery is so full. But if you wish to sit down, the second floor balcony area is open, and there's no one seated there. So anyone is, of course, is welcome to sit up there. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Brandell, Bredefield, Capriolio, Chavez, Soria, and President Olivia.
Here. At this time, we will have an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will ask Deputy Police Chief Pat Farmer to come forward with our invocation, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag. If you would all please stand.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Chavez for asking me to give the invocation. It's always an honor. I'd like to quote a little bit of the 103rd Psalm. "Bless the Lord, O my soul, and all that is within me; bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, O my soul, and forget not all his benefits, who forgives us of all our iniquities, who heals us of all our diseases, who protects us from destruction, and provides us with loving kindness and tender mercies." And please bow your heads with me as we pray. Dear Lord Jesus, we just thank you so much for all of your blessings, every day that you provide us, and we come to you with an attitude of gratitude. And, Lord, there's a lot of things going on in the world right now, a lot of chaos with threats of war in North Korea, all the hurricanes in Puerto Rico, the flooding in Texas, the fires in California, all the various violence going on throughout the world, the active shooter in Las Vegas recently. And, Lord, we don't understand the why, but we do understand the who, and that is who you are, and that you're still in control. And, Lord, we just put our faith and trust in you, and we ask you to please bless every city leader in the city of Fresno, every employee, and every resident that lives in our community. We just ask for your safety, protection, guidance, and favor as we try to do the best we can. And in particular, please protect our first responders in the city of Fresno as well. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. We'll now approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, do you have any changes to this morning's agenda?
Yes, I do. The first change is Item 1B, as in boy. It's a resolution regarding a final map of track number 6130. It's been moved to October 19th per staff. The 1005 item, appearance by Mary Estacaria. Ms. Correa requested that her appearance be continued to October 19th, 2017 council meeting. Item 3A regarding Fresno County Adult Compliance Team Agreement with the county. The amount of the AAR needs to be revised from 968,000, 984, to 969,000. And also, there's a special meeting for 830 as well, and it's regarding the actions pertaining to the lease agreement for the Northwest District Police Station to be located at 3080 to 3082 West Shaw Avenue. Those are all the changes I have.
Here. Any councilmembers? Okay, the screen is clear. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? The agenda is approved unanimously. And now we move to the event that everyone is here for. That's the ceremonial presentations. Presentation of the Fall 2017 Employee of the Quarter certificates, after which there will be a light reception outside the doors. So, City Manager, let's go.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. So, to me, this is one of the best parts of my job, where I get to meet and celebrate all of our employees. And it is an honor to be here this morning to recognize the employees that have been nominated by their coworkers to receive the Employee of the Quarter award. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you do each and every day for this community and for the city. So, thank you. And with that...
Thank you, City Manager. You know, we are the frontline of, among the frontline folks who take constituent calls and requests and complaints. And I can tell you that I do speak on behalf of my city council colleagues. We are so proud of our employees. We know that we are the quickest, we are the fastest, we are the most caring, we respond quickly, and that's all of you. Everyone from City Attorney's Office to police, to Public Works, to Parks, and everyone else in between. We know that when we take that call, if they're calling council, it's really important to them, and so they want it to get done. Doesn't mean that if they go through Fresno or 621 City, it's still going to get done quickly, but if they call us, it's because it means a lot to them. We feel completely confident, turning it over to you folks, that it's going to get done quickly, and whoever goes out or whoever responds is going to be courteous and really solve that problem, take care of it. So we're so proud to have been elected, to serve folks, and we're so proud to work with you all. So congratulations to all the winners, and thank you very much for coming.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be, can you hear me okay? Okay. I'll be reading all of the information that coworkers submitted about their coworkers to earn this recognition. I welcome you all, friends and family and staff, and we'll get started with the City Attorney's Office. And we'd like to welcome Kimberly Hernandez. Kimberly Hernandez joined the litigation unit of the City Attorney's Office as a legal secretary on October 6, 2016. Kimberly was assigned to the Chief Assistant of Litigation and took on the fast-paced desk associated with the position. She was immediately immersed in on-the-job training. Within one year, Kimberly mastered her assignments and now finalizes hundreds of public records act requests each month, provides assistance to outside counsel, including tasks associated with trial, and schedules endless meetings. Through all of this, Kimberly maintains a steady, unflappable persona, making her a go-to person for the litigation team. Kimberly is enthusiastic, always willing to help, and her can-do attitude is appreciated by her coworkers, and as a result, her coworkers have voted Kimberly as the City Attorney's Office Employee of the Fall Quarter. Congratulations. Next, from the City Council Office is Robert Jeffers. Is Robert here? Robert is a hard-working and honest employee who takes his job seriously. He has enthusiastically taken on many challenges while in District 2. He is available and willing to speak to constituents and assist them in anything they need. Robert is extremely professional and always puts 110% into everything he does. He's very knowledgeable regarding the city rules, ordinances, and practices. Robert is someone all council offices can turn to with policy questions. He is a true pleasure to work with, and we thank you, Robert, for all your hard work and dedication. Congratulations.
Yvonne, I wanted to say a few short words. And I've been limited by my staff to a couple sentences today. This guy's, he probably doesn't even want to stand here. He likes to work in the background, but he does a lot of great things for the city of Fresno. He's helped me most recently with the No Camping Ordinance and done a lot of research, connecting with other cities, seeing some of the best practices. Also very helpful when we put together the Anti-Slum Enforcement Team. So he's done a lot of great research for me and really helped us bring forth a lot of great policy for the city of Fresno. And my chief of staff, standing right here, taking some extra photos, Lindsay Barsamian, she deserves a special award also. In a few short weeks, she's going to be going out on maternity leave. I think we're going to lose, we're going to, we're going to lose her. We're going to lose her for three months, and I want everybody to know for those three months, Robert's going to be acting as my chief of staff, so you can connect with him on those issues. But, Robert, thanks for all your good work. I appreciate it.
Next, from the DARM Department, is Laura Rodriguez. Laura Rodriguez is being recognized for her excellent casework on over 100 cases, including outstanding housing work on multiple complex cases that resulted in compliance and success in one of the city's first receivership cases. The result of Inspector Rodriguez's work is stabilization of some of our city's most deteriorated neighborhoods. Thank you and congratulations, Laura. Also from DARM is Aldi Dodds. Aldi Balanço is reporting to three different assistant directors and handles a variety of projects and assignments that reflect unique styles and a broad range of content, ranging from housing, rental housing, planning and development to historic preservation. She welcomes new tasks and makes an effort to learn more than required to do the job right the first time. Aldi exhibits superior customer service and works well with peers and supervisors. She has been instrumental in onboarding new commissioners and employees to the DARM Department. Her attention to detail and responsiveness is greatly appreciated. Thank you and congratulations, Aldi. We're going to move on to the Finance Department and recognize Roxanna Duran. Roxanna is friendly and professional when communicating with her vendors about rules and regulations when they are new to opening their businesses. She knows how to work the permit machines and has helped other employees if they have questions regarding permits. Roxanne is an excellent representation of the city of Fresno. She's always has a smile on her face and is kind and helpful when dealing with the public. I believe her great customer service skills have brought positive thoughts to the public when it comes to dealing with the city of Fresno. It is so important for the city of Fresno to be positively represented, and when the public gets to deal with Roxanna, I feel that that is exactly what they're receiving. Good work ethic and a positive attitude are part of Roxanna's regular day, and that's why we've chosen her to be our Employee of the Quarter for Finance. Moving on to the Fire Department, we'd like to recognize Justin Simmons. Is Justin here? Firefighter Specialist Justin Simmons was hired as a firefighter in December 2004 and was promoted to the rank of engineer in November 2008. Justin has been heavily involved in duties within the USNR team over the past six months and has attended training classes both on and off duty to better his rescue skills and was recently involved in several water rescues. Justin has devoted many hours coordinating and conducting a San Joaquin River scout and mapping operation to identify numerous actual and potential hazards for the busy water rescue season. Justin has given several interviews regarding USNR water rescue operations and water safety, furthering educating the public on water safety. Simmons exemplifies the spirit of the Fresno Fire Department, where he continuously goes above and beyond the call of duty. We thank you for your service. Also in the Fire Department is Robert Garcia. Robert's not here, but let me tell you a little bit about him. Robert Garcia was hired as a firefighter in June 2008. During Garcia's nine years, he has proven to be invaluable member of the team, getting 100% in all activities on a daily basis. He often motivates his crew members to participate in training activities to improve knowledge and physical skills, which benefit the public and the department. Robert regularly goes beyond what is required when interacting with the public, showing his dedication to public service, from consoling ill patients to motivating Fresno's youth. Additionally, Robert is dependable during USNR and other emergency incidents, showing superior skill and dedication to safety. Garcia represents the department's core values of teamwork, trust, and commitment, and we thank you for your service. Also in the Fire Department is Scott Richeo. Scott was hired as a Fire Prevention Inspector in January 2016. From the beginning, Scott demonstrated a positive attitude and willingness to learn. He goes out of his way to guide new inspectors, encouraging them as they progress through their training, while still growing in his own technical knowledge. Scott consistently sets a great example of professionalism with contractors, business owners, and fellow inspectors. He is always willing to take on extra tasks without complaint and does it with a smile every time. Scott is a great addition to the Fresno Fire Department Prevention Division. Thank you for your service, Scott. One more. Philip Garcia? Also in the Fire Department is Philip Garcia. Is Philip here? Philip was hired as a Senior Storekeeper in March 2016 and is responsible for overseeing the Personal Protective Equipment, PPE, unit, which consists of managing the department's turnouts as well as the SCBA mask fit testing. His duties include inspections, testing, repairs, inventory management, and record-keeping, while ensuring the department remains NFPA compliant. Philip has done a great job his first year and continuously receives praise from the field personnel and chief officers. Since joining the department, Philip has taken ownership of the PPE program and has dramatically improved the overall level of service. His dedication, professionalism, and customer service contributes to the department's overall success. Coupled with his positive attitude and strong work ethic, Philip has become an invaluable asset to the department. Thank you so much for your service. Next, we'll go to the Information Services Department, and we'd like to recognize Ramona Earlier this year, the One Call Center began a difficult transition in which Ramona was the only full-time call center representative left working in the center. During the past six months, Ramona took on the responsibility to ensure that all calls, needs, and concerns for ongoing high-level quality customer service standards of the call center were maintained. Ramona was able to train five temporary employees and coordinate the breaks, lunches, and absences of these employees while continuing to take calls herself. Ramona's vast knowledge of the city and county of Fresno operations is exceptional, and she was able to relate that information to personnel she trained. During this time, Ramona maintained the highest quality, highest level of quality customer service that the public and the city staff have expected and enjoyed. Because of Ramona's professionalism, outstanding customer service, and her willingness to lead the call center through this transition, ISD is honoring Ramona as its Employee of the Quarter. Now we go to the Parks Department. And we'd like to start off by honoring Dana Liberty. Community Services Division could not function without Dana. She is an integral part of the aquatics program. Dana has handled sign-ups for 1,500 FUSD swim lessons and over 800 in the Central Unified Area. She also managed the swim lesson scholarships at various sites. She is always pleasant, informative, and professional. Dana takes care of reservations for the regional parks and ensures that the reserving party has all the information they need. She also supports her division manager in numerous ways, helping him to keep track of his calendar and meetings, stays on top of program contracts, and responds to questions from guarantees. Dana is flexible, helpful, knowledgeable, and willing to share what she knows. Thank you and congratulations. Also from the Parks Department is Kevin Pitts. Kevin displays a positive attitude when he comes to work. He communicates well with his supervisors as well as his coworkers when working on any given assignment. He uses his time wisely. His assignments are done timely, effective, and efficient in order to meet deadlines. Kevin has worked on multiple large projects such as the Roading House remodel, the Homes Gym remodel. He goes above and beyond to ensure his work is done professionally. He truly takes pride in his work. Kevin is someone that anyone can depend on to get the job done right. He works hard and gives his best effort in all he does. Kevin is a team player, problem solver, and offers ideas for improvement. We are proud to have him as part of our planned maintenance crew. Now moving on to the Personnel Services Department. We'd like to honor Jennifer Stather. Personnel Department Services is pleased to recognize Jennifer as Employee of the Quarter. In her role as a risk analyst, Jennifer is responsible for processing property damage claims associated with city property. In this capacity, Jennifer works collaboratively with her staff throughout the city to ensure that the city property is repaired or replaced. In addition, she has been successful in seeking reimbursement from responsible third parties. In FY17, she was able to recover more than $800,000, and in FY18, she has already recovered more than $100,000. Jennifer is a diligent professional who pitches in when needed to assist insurance compliance as well as processing liability claims. Jennifer is a model employee who makes significant contributions to the department and the city. Moving on to the Police Department, we'd like to start out honoring Brian Phillips. Is Brian here? Brian has been assigned to Internal Affairs since November 2015. During this quarter, Brian was assigned to several serious internal affair investigations. Despite handling a high volume of cases in internal affairs this year, along with several other collateral assignments, Brian completes his investigations in a timely manner, keeping in mind that employees are oftentimes anxious to put the administrative investigation behind them quickly. His investigations are consistently thorough and his decisions are well thought out, taking all facts and available information into consideration. Brian is sought out by his coworkers for advice and input on their investigations, thanks to his reputation as a solid investigator and ability to provide objective opinions. On a daily basis, Brian conducts himself in a manner that enhances both officers and community members' trust in the internal process of the Fresno Police Department. Brian's sound judgment and impeccable character make him an invaluable member of the Internal Affairs Bureau. Also in the Police Department is Patty Valdez. Is Patty here? Patty has had much success this year. Patty recently processed a high-profile homicide crime scene for latent prints in an attempt to identify the unknown suspects. She obtained latent prints from multiple areas within the scene. The prints were entered into the nationwide fingerprint system, which subsequently identified two suspects, one of which was later determined to be the shooter. Without the hard work and thorough attention to detail she puts into each crime scene, these suspects may not have been identified. Patty attends training courses out of town at her own expense, which shows her dedication to her craft and her commitment to giving the community the best. She has been called upon many times recently to switch her shift hours, which she does without question or hesitation, and she makes herself available to work extra shift with very little notice when needed. Patty truly has been an asset to the Crime Scene Investigation Section of the Fresno Police Department and the city of Fresno. Also in the Police Department is Anthony Velez. Anthony consistently proves himself to be one of the most dedicated and driven gang investigators in his unit. Detective Velez's search warrant writing expertise have been critical in numerous gang investigations, and he worked with numerous state and federal agencies on gang investigations. Detective Velez volunteered to lead magic's involvement in a major investigation called Alpha Dog. The investigation involved numerous Bulldog gang members and associates connected to serious violent crimes, including drug sales, sales of illegal guns, and human trafficking. Multiple agencies at the local, state, and federal levels partnered in the investigation, where Detective Velez demonstrated an outstanding level of dedication and a commitment to seeking justice. He authored numerous arrest search warrants during the operation. Approximately two dozen search and arrest warrants were served. Victims of the human trafficking were offered services, counseling, and multiple firearms were recovered. The investigation struck at those who had long considered themselves as untouchable by law enforcement. Also from the Police Department is Roland Diaz. Roland has been with the department for 20 years and has been a Student Resource Officer, SRO, for the past eight years. During this quarter, Roland took on supervisor duties for the SRO team in addition to his already busy schedule as the SRO at Hoover High School. Roland reviewed dozens of case reports from his teammates each week, maintained the team's monthly statistics, and compiled detailed quarterly student contact assessment reports, and arranged the schedule so for SRO's attendance at multiple Fresno Unified School District football games each week. Roland is dedicated to the Fresno Police Department and to the students, parents, and school staff that he serves. He works to support the SRO team. This quarter was invaluable, so congratulations. And moving on to the Public Utilities Department. We'd like to recognize Velma Para. Is Velma here?
Yes, Velma.
Velma? We would like to nominate Velma Para as our Employee of the Quarter for the Utilities Billing and Collections, UBC. Velma has been employed with the city of Fresno for 35 years. She was transferred... She was transferred to UBNC when Solid Waste Management Division consolidated all of their customer service clerks with UBNC. At first Velma was very timid and afraid to cashier. She did not like being responsible for other people's money, and would get nervous when the time came to balance the drawer. Velma has greatly improved over time. She is now able to handle the demands of answering continuous customer phone calls and also balancing her drawer. Due to her outstanding work ethic, she has become one of our top call takers. We appreciate her hard work and commitment to the UBNC customer service staff. Keep up the great work, Velma. Next in Department of Public Utilities is Michelle Coletta. Michelle has a great attitude and wonderful working relationships with her work associates. They appreciate and admire her for her outstanding organizational and follow-up skills, in turn making their job easier. Michelle is a strong team player, routinely taking on new tasks and assignments, and collaboratively working with others to achieve the best results. Since coming onboard with UPNE in 2015, Michelle has taken the initiative to develop and improve work processes and products that support the division and the capital program. Michelle is a dedicated professional who constantly goes above and beyond to help others and get the job done, and she does it with a smile and a great attitude. To recognize Michelle's initiative, excellent work, great attitude and demeanor, and truly significant contributions to the UPNE team, we are delighted to recognize Michelle as Employee of the Quarter. Next in the Department of Public Utilities is Perry Stofen. Not here? Okay, so neither? Okay, let me tell you a little bit about Perry real quick. Perry coordinates the personnel functions of the division, which covers a broad range of duties. Perry's routine responsibilities include coordinating all aspects of the recruitment process with the Personnel Services Department and division supervisors, ensuring employee evaluations are completed on time, maintaining personnel files for the division's 180-plus employees, and overseeing the workers' comp cases, and monitoring the job injuries along with assisting with special projects, and providing day-to-day personnel-related support to the divisions and supervisors and managers. So congratulations to Perry. And also being recognized in the Department of Public Utilities is Christina Fontes. Christina oversees or assists with many projects within the Water Division, and she strives to assure accuracy and quality in every assignment. The division manager and staff can count on Christina's attention to detail, such as maintaining and overseeing the public stuff program for the Water Division operations. And she also manages public stuff web app for discolored water requests being submitted from residents for water testing to assure customers that the submissions for testing will be done and they will receive the results. So congratulations to Christina. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the Public Works Department. And we'd like to recognize Jeff Smith. Is Jeff here? Jeff is one of the go-to guys in street maintenance. He is responsible for ordering and keeping track of equipment and supplies for the division and his nearly 100 staff. Jeff is always willing to help and take on assignments given to him, completing the assignments with accuracy and efficiency. He is continually coming up with cost-saving ideas to provide a more efficient and effective way of carrying out particular tasks. He has a positive attitude no matter what the circumstances and works well with his coworkers and supervisors. It is a pleasure to name Jeff Smith for the Fall 2017 Street Maintenance Employee of the Quarter. Next in the Public Works Department is Jacob Gaffin. Doesn't look like Jacob is here, but let me tell you a little bit about Jacob. He's a great example of an employee who serves the city with excellence and pride. From day one, he has been a team player that has shown that through his can-do attitude. Jacob is a dependable and efficient manager and can always be counted on to be at the job servicing the citizens of Fresno. His coworkers and supervisors agree that he is an exceptional employee to work with, and he gets the job done every time and shares his technical and professional expertise with all involved. So congratulations to Jacob. Also in the Department of Public Works is Bradley Kerner. Brad is a dedicated professional who consistently goes above and beyond his regular duties. He was recently promoted to Public Works Manager, where he now oversees the Design Service Section in Public Works. He is easy to work with, pleasant, timely, and highly responsive. Brad always makes an effort to communicate regularly in a transparent way. He has shown good attention to detail, catching issues as they arise and actively addressing them. Brad has also taken the initiative to improve the efficiency and organization within his section by setting up valuable templates for staff to use. He is a great asset to Public Works Team. Now moving on to the Transportation Department. We'd like to start off by recognizing Robert Hogg. Is Robert here? Bob has been the driving force for the department in preparing for pre-revenue operations of the Bus Rapid Transit BRT planning, stepping up at a time when the department is undergoing change. His work on the pre-revenue operations plan for the approval of the Federal Transit Administration has been truly appreciated. The department will use the plan for ensuring the system is ready prior to revenue operations when the ribbon is cut early 2018 on the project. He has documented the role of every division and its employees within every division to ensure success and a smooth start. For all his extra effort beyond his department-wide training duties, we say thank you for a job well done. We are pleased to support him as the Employee of the Quarter. Next in the Department of Transportation is Brian Goss. Brian was recently, excuse me, Brian was promoted recently to the position of Transit Schedular, jumping in headfirst as the department is working on establishing new schedules and new bus rapid transit schedules for the pre-revenue implementation of the BRT project. He has taken these projects to ensure very tight deadlines are being met. Brian has been with the department for over 21 years, where he started as an equipment service worker, and most recently served as a management analyst too, where he worked on critical automation efforts using the Trapeze data system. We thank Brian for his hard work and are pleased to support him as the Employee of the Quarter. Also in the Department of Transportation is Lena Mendoza. Is Lena here? Lena joined the Fax Team in February 2017 in the role of Capital Development Specialist. Her can-do attitude, commitment to excellence, and resourcefulness has been a positive impact to the team. Lena immediately undertook challenging roles to solve the Manchester Transit Center ADA barriers and assumed the quality and document control responsibilities for the Bus Rapid Transit Project. In a short period of time, she has demonstrated a strong understanding of the FTA regulations and continues to learn more each day. Her coworkers describe her as a friend, mentor, dedicated to her responsibilities, and committed to helping her peers. Thank you, Lena, for your hard work and dedication. And finally, in the Transportation Department is Mike Stevens. Mike has held the position of Body and Fender Repair since July 2012, when he transferred from the Fleet Division, where he was a combination welder. The knowledge and expertise Mike gained as a welder has allowed him to become an extremely valuable asset to Fax Maintenance due to his wide-ranging skill set. He manufactured the lettering for the Fax Administration Building that was renamed in honor of the former city manager. Mike took the initiative to better serve the department by enrolling in collision repair and refinish certification tests administered by the National Institute of Automotive Service Excellence and received his master certification. Mike stepped into the acting lead role when his lead worker was on extended leave and confirmed he was more than qualified to keep the shop organized and efficient. Mike has a can-do attitude that is infectious, and results from the projects he has given always exceed management expectation. The department appreciates Mike's hard work and devotion to customers. Well, that's it for our ceremony today. As noted earlier, there are refreshments in the foyer, so please help yourself and
Let's go ahead and approve the minutes, and then we're going to juggle some things around in order to hear from everyone this morning. So are there any members of the council who have any changes to the minutes from the meeting of September 28th, 2017? Okay.
Motion to approve.
The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, and the screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Minutes pass unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, here's how we're going to handle the next couple hours. We'll begin by having councilmember reports and comments, where councilmembers have a chance to weigh in on any issue that they deem necessary. Following councilmember reports and, you know what? Here's what I'll do. Let's go ahead and do the consent calendar first, because we do have some people in attendance today that have to get out immediately. So we'll do consent calendar, councilmember reports and comments, and then I'll go ahead and open unscheduled communication and give folks who are here to speak this morning a chance to speak right off the bat. So consent, council, councilmember reports, then we'll do unscheduled communication. We'll take a short break. We'll go into closed session, because Mayor Brand has some scheduling requirements, and he needs to get into closed session and get out this morning. And then we will continue with the rest of the meeting. We'll go ahead and do three minutes for public comment this morning. So let's begin with the consent calendar. Are there any items that councilmembers wish to remove from the consent calendar? Okay, Member Brand out.
I'd like to remove item 1C for discussion.
Okay.
And 1H as well.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, the screen is clear. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any item contained on the consent calendar? Yes, ma'am? Right now.
Be right now.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to the council. The screen is clear. The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar and a second.
Does she know that if she wanted to speak on 1E?
Okay.
Want to make sure that...
Anyone who wishes to speak to the council, address the council on item 1E, recycle center. I'll go ahead and reopen public comment in case there's some confusion. If you wish to speak on item 1E, is that what you're here to speak on? Okay, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you can bend that, and then you'll have three minutes.
I'm Leonard Lang, 10481 Christopher Street, Cypress, California. You have my letters. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity. What's happening in regards to these ordinances is happening all over this state, so it's not just here. And it's an issue of homelessness, and in San Francisco, where they did something very similar to what you're proposing here, car break-ins increased significantly afterwards. I learned that at a meeting in Sacramento. I see a rush to judge here, and in the haste, there's not been a full examination of the issues. The majority of people who go to these recycling centers are needy, they're not homeless, and they are local residents. Also, I've seen an issue with the process. Council has got a recommendation from Planning Commission to oppose this. The staff has changed the ordinance. This should go back through the process, public hearing, Planning Commission get their recommendation. Right now, your recommendation from Planning Commission is to oppose this. You've changed the amendment, but their decision has not changed, their recommendation has not changed. The people that you will put out of business, and because they are subsidized by the state and they will not get a subsidy if they move, they have no option but to oppose this. So this is looking towards legal action. I just want you to be concerned about that. I urge a no vote.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a handful of cards on item 1E, and let me get through those so that I can make, I'm sorting the cards out by issue right now. Leonard, that was you who just spoke to us, correct? Leonard Lang? Okay, good. Our next speaker is going to be Debbie. Debbie, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Followed by Fernando Hernandez, Ricardo Hernandez Jr.
Hi, my name is Debbie Nard, and I live at 3550 West Spruce Avenue in Fresno, California. And I was kind of surprised when I got home from vacation and heard about this ordinance. I recycle my goods at these recycling centers. The reasons I heard for the need for this ordinance were that the centers draw a bad crowd, and the city already provides this service. The homeless were collecting recyclables and turning them in for money at these centers for many years before Ashley Swearingen broke up the homeless camps downtown and turned every parking lot, shopping center, median, and sidewalk into attracting a bad crowd. The mayor is always talking about bringing businesses to Fresno and attracting jobs. The city, however, doesn't seem to have much regard or sympathy for the people already providing jobs and paying business taxes. I'm wondering how many people will lose their jobs at these recycling centers. These are the very people who you are saying that you want to help. This will be a very messy situation at the grocery stores. They were not built to accommodate this. The stench of beer and the stickiness underfoot at these centers are not suited to a grocery store where people are going to purchase food. This will not stop the homeless from turning in their cans for money. They will just go to the grocery store. Finding the grocery store will just be another cost that will probably be passed on to their customers. In a city with many low-income people, higher food costs won't be helpful. This will just make it easier for these people to get their recyclables out This will just make it easier for these people to get their recyclables out of people's cans. This will just... They won't care about a misdemeanor citation. This will simply draw these people into the residential neighborhoods even more and cause more police calls on our already strained resources. The city says that they already provide this recycling services, but you do not. We pay you to pick up our recyclables. We pay five cents for each can or bottle that we use, and when we recycle them by weight, we get much less than five cents back. Now, you want us to give them to the city for free. This is very anti-citizen. I have more, but I guess that's it.
Oh, no, you still have one minute.
Oh, one minute? Oh, sorry. Okay. I also wonder if you realize how many more trips the garbage trucks will make if they start picking up all these recyclables that these centers handle. The business owners are already under assault by the people causing this problem. I've heard of stores on Blackstone losing $2,000 a day in stolen merchandise. There is stealing and loss at the grocery stores. The business owners can lose $900 in theft, and it's only a misdemeanor. So, you're putting a pretty high value on these recyclable bottles and cans with a misdemeanor charge for stealing those. These ordinance do nothing to address the people who are causing the problem. Everyone else is being punished. All of us who are recycling, trying to recoup a portion of the deposit that we are forced to pay, the people who are working and providing a service that we need will lose their jobs. The grocery stores will have to spend a lot of money to...
Please finish your thought.
Okay. The grocery stores will have to spend a lot of money to accommodate this mandate that the recycling centers are already doing quite well or pay $100 in fines per day, which will be passed on to their customers.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Fernando Hernandez, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Fernando Hernandez, 2501 West Shaw. Once again, I come up here for the customers, not so much the business. I get thousands and thousands of customers a week. They paid five, 10 cents at the store, they're going to lose that CRV. We're talking about grandma, we're talking about people who can't afford to pay their water bill, people who can't afford certain things. The extra five, 10, $15 they come and recycle, it helps them. So, we're here for the customer. I'm not here as a business. I'm just one guy. But, we have thousands and thousands of customers that come to these recycling centers because they need the money. It's not because they want to, it's because they need the money. We all need a little help. And so, that's all. I'm here for my customers, and I'm not here as a business. I know you guys have a problem with the homeless, but that's such, such a small percentage of the business that you guys are handicapping a lot of people. Just for five homeless I have, I have thousands of customers. Rethink about it. Take it off the thing. Let's redo this whole thing. We don't mind working with all of you. We don't mind doing stuff. I've done it for the last 10 years. I've been with you guys for 10 years, getting told this, this, shopping carts, so forth, whatever. I paid up to $3,000 a month in security service at times to try to get the homeless out. We have the same issue. So, thank you, guys. Good luck, have fun.
Thank you for your comments. Ricardo Hernandez Jr., followed by... Is it Josh Hernandez?
Good morning.
Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two... Three minutes.
Okay. Ricardo Hernandez Jr., 3232 East Ventura Street. I apologize, I'm finding it cold, but...
It's okay.
I'm sorry, but this is... I find this disrespectful that you guys are carrying a conversation while I'm trying to fight for my business.
Go ahead.
I see people texting, talking to each other. That's disrespectful, especially for us that we voted you guys in. So, anyways, I apologize for that. We're here fighting for the people. We don't want the homeless either. They trash our business. We do a lot of extra work to clean up around the area. We do whatever we can to keep our business as clean as possible. It is a dirty business, and it is tough. It really is. You're not going to cripple me. You're going to cripple a lot of other people. I'm still young. I have other businesses going. That being said, I'm here fighting for my customers, for my employees. I want them to continue to have a job, them to be able to support their families, put food on the table. By you shutting us down, you're going to put, you know, my employees out of a job, all my customers out of those extra $5, $10 a week that they make, that they really need. Think about it. Let's talk about this and see what we can do about the homeless. The homeless is the issue, not us. It's not you guys, it's the homeless. You guys are supporting the homeless. The homeless already knows they're getting wick, they're getting social... They're getting whatever type of money, they're selling it for half the price because they don't need the food stamps. They're going to go to a church, they're going to go to missions, they're going to go get food, free food, all over the place. And then they're going to, you know, with the money that the government's giving them, they're cashing in for drugs. And then, yeah, they're recycling, and that's extra drug or alcohol money, or whatever they use it for. And so, we're not trying to support those people. We're trying to help the people that, you know, really need it. And so, if you guys do us a favor and, you know, create a better solution of getting rid of the homeless, kick them out of the city, put them in bankmans, dude, that's your guys' job, not our job. Our job is to provide a service for the city. And by you guys taking that service away, it makes it really tough. Who's going to bank? It's going to be the garbage disposal company and probably you guys too. You guys will probably split the profit. Who knows? But, I mean, that's what it sounds like to us. You guys are trying to monopolize the system. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Now, we have Joshua Hernandez. Please come forward, followed by Ricardo Hernandez. Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Joshua Hernandez, 370 B Street. I'm just here to say I oppose your guys' ordinance, and that's it.
Thank you. Ricardo?
Ricardo Hernandez, 1405 West Shields. Same thing, just here to oppose and have it removed from the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item contained on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hello. Jose Barrales, 517 Heathergood. Sorry for my English. I'll try.
It's okay.
I had a recycling business for 11 years. It's only I have for my family. The three guys working for me are the same. This is not just a problem for homeless. You know, there's no fixing nothing. I have 150 customers a day, they need to, the recycling business. Not everybody have cars for go-sides for recycling. So, this make big problem for these people. For me, I have 43-year-old, it's hard for me to find a shop. For the 7-Eleven or supermarket, you make $3,000 a month, and they need to pay for no hard recycling. So, the only I say, we vote everybody for you be here. You work for us. So, try be doing the best for us. No business. We vote for you, but we feel you go doing the best for the people, me, like a business, the people I have here working every day. So, we trust in you, try doing the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council on any item contained on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Diane Smith. I live at 1540 West Los Sierra Drive, Southwest Fresno. I just was able to get a copy of the agenda, and I have a question regarding one of the items that's on here, and it's item 4B, approve an agreement with the Southwest Community Development Corporation. I'd like to see the paperwork on that, if that's possible, and if we can get an explanation of exactly what that is.
That item is not contained on the consent calendar. That item probably will be heard later on this morning or this afternoon.
Okay, where's the paper... Where can I find the paperwork on that?
We can get that for you in the city clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on any item contained on the consent calendar? Okay. Okay, then we'll close public comment for the consent calendar, just as an item of housekeeping for folks who made it clear that they wish this item to be removed from the agenda in terms of recycling. It has to be removed by the council member, and so, since it was not removed, it will be contained in the rest of the consent calendar package that we're about to vote on. We also already had a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second, and the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, the consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you. We had two items that were removed from the consent calendar. The first one is item 1C, and the second one is item 1H by Member Brandow.
All right. Thank you, Council President. And so, item 1C is about the catering agreement between SMG and Pardini's, and I just have a question that comes from some conversations I've had over the years, and I see Jim is in the audience today, and I actually, we had a conver... I had a conversation with Jim about this as well. Here's one thing, city manager, that I have heard, that some of the big, huge wedding events that come to the convention center, a lot of times from the Sikh community, so I've heard from a lot of our Sikh constituents, my Sikh constituents, they've requested that when they have these huge events, that they would be able to provide their own alcohol, or at least at a certain level, once they've paid into the, you know, once they've paid a certain amount, they would be interested in providing their own alcohol. They want to use some high-end alcohols that are not available, haven't been available to them, and there's such huge events that they would like to bring in their own alcohol and maybe save money and provide different types of alcohol. I've heard that over the years in several conversations, so I'm wondering, is there any room for that inside the discussion? And I thought now would be the time to bring it up, so...
Councilmember, my position on that, I have heard and been requested by some of these weddings to do that. It has never been granted. We have liquor licensing issues involved with that. We have liquor liability issues involved with that, and I think just as importantly is we have control issues involved with that, where that we can cut the alcohol off if we see that it's necessary, and that does happen sometimes.
So, I mean, if... I don't... I'm not talking about they want to bring in their own alcohol and pour it themselves all over the place, but they would like to bring in some alcohol and probably still have it just served there. And so, I think the control issue, you know, some of those issues you brought up, Bill, could probably be worked around. So, now, I'm not dead set on this, I just want... Would like to know if this is... You mentioned... So, you've been approached about this?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. And...
I would be happy to discuss it further with the city manager, and we can get back with you on it if you'd like that. But, it's honestly, these kind of things are a very slippery slope, as you can imagine. If you open these windows, if you will, up for one group, how can you not do it for other groups?
Well, I think there's ways around that as well. I think you open it up to everybody, but if you have a contract where you would like to... Where you would like the concessionaire to have a certain amount of money, say it's $10,000 worth of alcohol sales, and if it is huge weddings with 800 people could go above that...
Sure.
Maybe we set a standard where at... Once they've reached $10,000 in sales, or if they contract for that, and I'm just using that number as example, because I'm not an expert.
Understood.
But then, maybe at these larger events, there could be a break for people, and you'd say, "Yeah, sure, if you match this amount of money, then anything above that, we have no problem with you bringing in some of your own beverages." So, it's just conceptual. I've heard it a number of times, so I just thought today would be a good day to ask that and make that comment, so...
Again, be happy to sit down with the city manager and discuss it, get you some further information.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
So, if I could, if I'm hearing, one of the issues is that some of these events want to bring in a different type or a higher-end product that isn't generally available by the caterer. And if that's an issue, then we can certainly have that conversation. Understand, from the caterer's standpoint, there's a risk of going out and buying or acquiring a higher-end product and then being left with whatever's left over and not recovering that expense. As long as the pouring of that product is still controlled by the caterer, I think we might be able to work out something, provided that at the end of the evening, the event holder understands that whatever product is poured is poured and is sold at whatever rate it is. They don't get into that kind of conversation, because as Mr. Overfelt pointed out, there's a lot of control issues and liability issues that come with our license to pour in alcohol, and the caterer's license as well. And so, if it's just a different product type, certainly we can work out arrangements to provide that. It's just that the risk comes with potentially a lot of product that's left over at the end of the evening.
Yeah, and Bruce, that really answers at least two-thirds of the questions that I've heard about. So, these are... Now, at the end of the day, why would I even bring that up? Because it just so happens that the Sikh community throws these magnificent, huge weddings, people come in from all around the world sometimes, and we want to have a spot for them to come and continue and feel like we're working with them to have them... To help them have a fantastic event, and then that encourages more use of the convention center. So, I just, you know, to me, it's... I've had the conversation enough times, I thought I would bring it up, so...
Understood.
With that, I will make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I think Mr. Pardini wants to come forward. Do you wish to come forward to comment? Are you okay? Can you speak into the mic, please?
We provide any alcohol price-wise that they would like. I mean, there's no ceiling on it. I know Steve and I have had this conversation. I think down the road, if we can work something that would make them a little happier because they are a big client at times, is fine with us, but we're not trying to put a roadblock in it. But, there's a lot of laws, there's a lot of ABC, there's a lot of controls, there's a lot of things that take place under a license that we just got to be careful about. So, if we work with the ABC and that kind of thing, I'm sure we can come to some kind of a good agreement.
Well, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. I just wish to say that I think it's silly if a cultural group cannot have a cultural beverage because of some law... Near-sighted laws that don't take into effect that this is a necessity to some of our groups. So, I also want to weigh in with Councilmember Brandow and say that this needs to be addressed with... Thank you, city managers. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of this item? Okay, seeing none, the item passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Moving on to item 1H, this is actions pertaining to outdoor environmental education facilities, grant funds, Member Brandow.
And really, this one I pulled because I wanted to just highlight this half-a-million-dollar grant the City of Fresno Parks is getting for Highway City and the neighborhood... The Neighborhood Park Community Center that's there. I had a meeting with Parks yesterday, and a lot of great things are going to be a result of this $500,000. So, I really appreciate the work of our Parks Department going out and securing this grant, and I think it's going to be a great boost for our community center slash park in Highway City. And I got to hear about some of the wonderful things that are going to happen due to this half-a-million-dollar grant, so I just wanted to highlight that with... By pulling this item. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to accept this $500,000.
Motion and a second.
I have one comment.
All right, Member Caprileo.
Thank you. How does District Four get that kind of money, and District One, and Three, and Six, and Seven? What's the format, if you can share that with us?
Well... Well, you'd have to talk to the Parks Department, they're the ones doing the work, but I'm sure they're working on behalf of the whole city, so it just so happened they landed this one for Highway City.
That's ironic, isn't it?
It's great.
The word council member could hoard infrastructure dollars until they got that much.
Well, that's another story. Okay, well, I'll maybe discuss it with you offline and get the people that were coordinating that with your district, and we can do it for the rest of us, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Capriolio. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of item 1H? Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. So that is the end of consent calendar and contested consent calendar. Now we're going to move to council member reports and comments, and I have a number of council members punched up. We're going to begin with Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
I want to take a few minutes.
I'm sorry, point of order, before we speak, so if we can give staff a chance to address the problem with the lectern microphone, is this just, can the volume be turned up? Can something be done? Because I'm starting to receive complaints from people watching it who cannot hear.
I don't think they're close enough to the mic, quite frankly.
Is that the issue? Okay.
You got to get, like all of us, you've got to touch the mic.
Other people too. So, if there's anything we could do while council members are speaking to fix that, so that we can hear folks. And I guess if you're here, just speak forcefully. Thank you. Okay, Member Capriolio, thank you.
I want to take a few minutes to thank the Public Works Department for all their hard work, and I was out walking in my neighborhoods with my staff, and we ran into a crew that was doing sidewalk repairs, and Rolando, Jose, Ryan, and Richard, and two others that were driving trucks, we couldn't get their names, but thank you, thank you, thank you, to Scott and Brian as well, and the administration, because it's, I can't express the gratitude from the calls I get from the constituents saying how great the city is. Nine times out of 10, we get the complaint, and not very often do we get the accolades. So, Brian and your crew, Public Works, thank you, thank you, you guys did a great job, and this isn't the first time this has happened. You folks are fantastic. Another thank you goes to Mike Sanchez for his professionalism. We had some businesses that wanted to vent their frustrations, and he took the time to assist those businesses and resolve their issues, so thank you, Mike Sanchez. And then last night, I had the opportunity to welcome home 68 veterans, ranging in age from 80 to 97, and they just returned from Washington, DC, and it was an emotional, moving moment, and they were off in wheelchairs and walking the best they could, and we had the airport full of people, there's probably 350 people there, and these veterans were crying, and they were so thrilled. A couple of them told me that the trip was fantastic, but the reception when they got home was even more impressive to them and meant so much to them. So, the next one is April of 18, and I'd invite all of you to come out. Usually the plane arrives around 6 o'clock, it rolls toward the facility there, and they have fire trucks shooting water, and the plane goes under the arch, so that's the first bit of reception. And then we have Lamar naval members lining up for 100 yards to welcome them, and then the public, we have color guard. It's an experience that you'll never forget, and that's all made possible by donations to the Central Valley Honor of Flight. Food Max, in particular, I want to acknowledge them, they donated a check of over $28,000 to make this happen, so hats off to Food Max, fantastic community partner. And, Steve, I think you're aware of this, Saturday, October 14th, New Mexico Lobos are going to be beaten by the Fresno State Bulldogs. So I want you all to come out to the game and support them. And my last comment is I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of those who lost their lives in Las Vegas. What a tragedy, and a thank you to the first responders and the citizens that all pitched in, we've seen it over and over on TV, and our heart goes out to Las Vegas and those unfortunate victims. And if you read some of the obituaries, you can get it online, and some of it was in the paper, it's amazing, they're just ordinary people like us in the wrong place at the wrong time, but they responded as best they could under the circumstances, and our hearts go out to the Las Vegas victims. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Member Capriolio. Member Brandow?
Thanks, Council President. I just wanted to say, this last week, Granville Homes invited me to a little meeting that they had west of 99 for some of their neighborhoods out there, and I went to that, wasn't one of my district meetings, but I felt like it was a good thing to do, so, since they had called that meeting. And a lot of concerns continue about development west of 99, especially related to traffic. I just wanted to let everybody know, we had Captain Burke Farah came out and addressed crime issues, and Scott Moser came out and addressed traffic, and some of the, there are good things happening, some of them just aren't happening super fast, but I did want to just take this opportunity to let folks that live west of 99 understand that we hear their concerns about traffic and these other issues, so thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you, Member Brandow. And Member Capriolio, Member Baines?
Thank you, Council President, and I'm going to take a moment to, I'm going to take my time in council member reports and comments to address some comments that was made, that were made by my colleague Gary Brettafield on September 28th. And normally, we don't use this time for personal dialogue or what have you, or personal feelings, but I felt it was appropriate to respond in the same form at which Councilmember Brettafield started this discussion. And I've had, when the comments were made, Councilmember, and I'm going to be talking directly to you, Councilmember Brettafield, when the comments were made, as many of you know, I wasn't in the country at the time and wasn't here to hear them personally. But the very next day, or that morning, I was, sent multiple messages about the clips of your remarks, and... Let me just say, they were painful.
Member Baines, let me, if I may, you and I were on that train, we were in Spain doing business for the city. Serious business, this high-speed rail, whether you like it or not, it's here. And we were on, I think, our third leg of a train ride, and trying to absorb all this information, it's really a complex thing, and we were doing the best we could to understand it all, and then out of nowhere, 7,000 miles away, comes the information that my colleague is going to address, and it was just, it was kind of embarrassing and shocking at the time that we couldn't even do city business, city business, 7,000 miles away. And anyway, I'm here supporting my colleague and his comments, so, thank you, Member Baines.
Thank you, my friend, I appreciate that. I really do. So, I know that even when we were away, that I would have to come back and discuss this. And frankly, I didn't really want to. This is not a topic that is easy to discuss, or, and I thought the format was completely inappropriate, as you know. And just for you all, I have some prepared remarks, and I'm going to try to get into them, but the Monday I returned, Councilmember Brettafield and I talked directly, we spoke face to face, and I think everything that I'm going to say today, I've already shared with him personally. So he's not going to hear anything that he has not heard from me already. He knows full well, I believe, the pain and damage that he caused me personally, and because of that, I had to address it. And before I start, I want to apologize to our clerk. You know, I don't imagine how difficult that was for you. So I'm sorry. You know, I'm not going to be able to get through my remarks. I have a lot to say, but, you know, the, one of the things that I share with Gary that makes this so hard, because we sit next to each other, and he's a colleague of mine, he's not some random guy, he's not somebody I don't know. We work together. We don't always agree, we, and sometimes we may disagree more than we agree, but I still regard him as a colleague and a friend. So it was very difficult to think of a person that I work with to have these ideas about people of color. It was extremely damaging and painful. And so that's where a lot of my emotion comes from, because we work together. And I can imagine how any of you would feel if a coworker or colleague of yours had so thoughtlessly hurt you, and you still got to work with that person, still got to make decisions on behalf of the city, it was difficult. And I told Gary that I thought, you know, I thought, just to give my remarks some context, and what I told, and Councilmember, I've shared with you, that I thought your remarks really lacked thoughtfulness or any historical context or compassion. I mean, you know, you had an awesome opportunity, you decided to address probably one of the nation's most difficult issues in the history of our country, and you had an opportunity to bring our community together, and you missed it by a mile. Instead, you drove more wedges between us when there was an opportunity there. You're a community leader. These are your constituents, just like they're mine, and they look for that leadership, they look for you to bring our community together, and you didn't do that. It doesn't mean you can't, but at that time, you chose to take a completely different approach. So, I had to literally write some things out, and most of you that know me well, know I don't like to write stuff out, I just like to just talk, but it was so important that I wanted to make some notes to myself, and, because there are some specific things that you mentioned, Gary, that I just think need to be contextualized. You know, you started your remarks talking about the NFL players' protests, you know, and while I have no problem with you disagreeing with them protesting, you know, I don't, you know, it's America, you can disagree with people, but you know, these athletes are peacefully protesting. Peacefully. We're not talking about violent protests, we're not, they're not even speaking. They're peacefully protesting. And I don't understand why in this country, in this day and age, why peaceful protest is still viewed as something so offensive. It's a peaceful protest. And let me remind everyone here that a protest is not meant to be convenient. It is meant to make you uncomfortable. It is meant to make you pause and think about what they're protesting. That's what it's designed to do. This country's built off of that. When people protest, we do it so you stop and think. And I find it, I find it offensive that people are telling them, telling the athletes, telling people how they should protest so it can make them feel more comfortable. It's not what it's about. You know, there should be some celebration for the fact that there was a time in this country where protests were not peaceful. But these athletes are choosing to peacefully protest something that they believe in. You know, and I'll tell you, Gary, as you went into your remarks, you talked about, you talked about some pretty painful things, you even brought up, you know, you said several things, and I'm going to pick a few of them out, and one of them was you talked about your offense of the fact that we're taking down these Confederate statues in our country. And I recognize the fact that you're a veteran, we talked about your service to this country, and what I find, and what I found, my father's a veteran, what I find hard to believe is that a veteran that wore the uniform for this country could stand up for those that were traitors to this country. The Confederacy were traitors to this country. And I share with you that I don't think there should be a single statue of any Confederacy being memorialized in this country, and I'm just going to, I'm going to read a couple quotes from the Confederacy, right? I mean, just to put it in context. George Hamilton, March of 1862, said, "I want to see the day when a Negro is put, I never want to see the day when a Negro is put on equality with a white person. There is too many free niggers now to suit me, let alone having four millions." Alexander Stephens, who was the vice president of the Confederacy, said, "Its foundations are laid, its cornerstone rests upon the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man, that slavery is his natural and normal condition." The Confederate Constitution, Article 4, Section 3, Paragraph 3, this is what they wanted to do. "The Confederate states may acquire new territory, in all such territory, the institution of Negro slavery as it now exists in the Confederate states shall be recognized and protected by Congress and the territorial government." I don't understand how anybody could stand up for that. I don't. I have no idea how a person could stand up for what that represented in this country. You know, we've been going back and forth, Gary, and you shared with me about how, we talked about the protests, we talked about when ML, Martin Luther King Jr. men, we talked about, you shared with me how you took your son to a Martin Luther King Jr. march, you know, a few years ago. And I think I share with you that that's great, but during the time when Martin Luther King was protesting, peacefully by the way, some of the very same insults that were levied, that are being levied against our protesters today, were levied against him. You know, Martin Luther King was regarded as unpatriotic, dangerous, and uppity. In 1963, a majority of white Americans, 60%, had unfavorable views of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s march on Washington. A 1961 poll revealed that nearly 57% believed the activities of activism would hurt the cause civil rights. In 1966, 85% of whites believed that civil rights demonstrations were harmful, and activists were routinely blamed for unrelated increases in crime. It strikes me as interesting that the narrative hasn't changed very much. You know, 50 years later, people herald Dr. King, but during that time, they didn't like him, they murdered him for being a peaceful protester, peaceful activities. And while, and while, of course, times have changed, as we go on in my remarks, you'll see that there are still things left to fight about. And what these athletes decided to protest, what these folks are here standing up for, the things that we still have left to fight about, you're right, this country fought a civil war in 1861 to 1865 and ended slavery as we know it, but didn't end racism. 1964, you're right, it, you know, we did, the Civil Rights Act in 1964 did end Jim Crow, but it didn't end racism. And there are still things that people want to, this, the people that are protesting love this country. You said you have an unabashed love for this country, so do they. The people that are protesting love this country. You said you have an unabashed love for this country. So do they. So do I. I love this country. And we want it to be better. We want it to be better. You talked about Muhammad Ali and Jackie Robinson as people who transcended the sport, and you're right. They did, but people didn't think so back then. They were also called unpatriotic. You know, you may remember Jackie Robinson, who was a World War II veteran, refused to, to stand for the National Anthem. He was a veteran and refused to stand because of the way that this country treated him. You know, we, we talked about, and, and I, and forgive me for, normally I'm a much more concise speaker, and this is definitely disjointed for me, but there were things that stood out to me that I wanted to make sure that I responded to. You know, the athletes are protesting police misconduct in this country. And um... You cited instances where you believe that the perception of police misconduct was misplaced. You know, but Gary, the, the truth of the matter is there is police misconduct that happens in the United States of America. I mean, it does, and it's not to say, and it is not, it is not to say that there's something wrong with the profession of being a, a police officer. I was once a police officer. It is one of the finest professions in the world, but let's not pretend. Let's be honest with the dialogue. There are times when there is police misconduct. I mean, listen. You know, we, just last year, Charles Kenzie, unarmed African-American man with his hands raised high above his head while laying in the street, complying with all of the author- officer's commands, was shot. Right? You saw that. I hope you spoke out, because I know you saw it. Everyone saw it. A little, a little less known, and I don't, I'm not gonna get into the, 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 the countless times that instances of police misconduct have happened, but we can't pretend like they've never happened. We can't pretend like there's not something to protest about. We can't pretend like there's not something to stand up against. Earl Sampson, most people don't know about Earl Sampson, was stopped and searched 258 times in the course of a couple of years, and arrested 62 times for trespassing while he was at his work, place of work. That's happening in this country. Doesn't paint the law enforcement profession with a broad brush, broad brush, but there's work to be done. And let, and what about Oliver Baines? Me? You know, I can tell you about the, the things that police officers did to me when I was a young man. Not that long ago. It's happened to me personally. So when you stand up and you just say that all that has to happen is people need to just listen to the police, as if that makes it okay. It's bigger than that. It's deeper than that, Gary. And I can tell you, there are a lot of people out here that have had the very same experiences that I have. They have. There's work to be done. Did you know right now that, you talked a lot about statistics. Well, listen, African-Americans are twice as likely as whites to be shot while unarmed, right now. Black people are 3.37 times as likely to be arrested for the possession of marijuana than whites. Yet, white people use marijuana the same rate than we, that race that we do. Blacks are arrested at a rate more than twice the percentage in our population. Federal prosecutors are almost twice as likely to file charges carrying mandatory minimum sentences for African-Americans than whites. Blacks are more likely, more likely than whites to receive prison terms rather than community service. Black people are in prison at twice the rate of white people in the United States. African-American men were sentenced to 19% longer time periods in federal courts across the US than white men convicted of similar crimes, right now. You don't think that there are things to protest? You don't think that we want things to be better? These are things that we should be talking about and working on as a community. Not minimizing them and pretending like they don't exist. Right now, most current study, Stanford just finished it. Black people are 20% more likely to get a speeding ticket than whites. But here's the kicker. Latinos are 30% more likely. Right now, in our country. And again, this is not to say that there's something awfully wrong with America. This is simply to say, there is work that we should be doing. There are things that we should be working on together. And instead of having a dialogue about race that drives wedges between us, we have, we can use this as an opportunity to, to, to put things in context and draw people together. You mentioned how this country elected his first black president, and that white people voted for him twice to be elected. And I don't disagree with that. Obviously, white people did vote for President Obama. But I'll just remind you that every other white man in this country that's been elected, black people voted for them too. It's not just a one-way street. We elect presidents together. We elect people together. It's not a white issue or a black issue. We do this together in our country. And you're right, white people died in the Civil War so that blacks could be free. You're right. And black people died in the Civil War so blacks could be free. Right? They die side by side together. It wasn't just white people dying. There were black people that were dying in that, in the Civil War too. And you're right about Jim Crow when it ended, and many white people marched during the Civil Rights Era in the 50s and the 60s, right along the side, sides of black people. White people died too, right along the sides of black people, but we died together. It was not a white or a black issue. This country can come together. People die side by side together in the advancement of a perfect union. They did that together, Gary. You know, um, you made, you made a mention that you felt like blacks were... We act as inherent victims. That hurt. It's almost like you don't know any black people. That hurt. I'm not an inherent victim. I get up every day. Like all these people do. Fight very hard for the right things. Not a, I'm not a victim. I'm a person of, I'm very proud of the successes that I've had in my life. But I don't rest on those. And I'm looking at people out here that feel the same way. We're not inherent victims, but don't misunderstand that there are things that that we still need to do for this country to make it better. You know, ultimately, what your remarks did was you kinda, not kind of, you incorrectly perpetuated stereotypes about people of color that are hurtful and shameful. You know, you made it, almost made it seem like African-American families don't want to promote educational opportunities for our families, or we don't understand the importance of family value or social responsibility. You know, Gary, people of color want the very same thing that white people do. We don't want different things. We want the same things. So to insinuate that we need to be focused on educational opportunities and family structure, it's insulting. As if we don't do that. As if we're not fighting for that every day, just like you're fighting for the very same thing for your family day in and day out. Don't think that I don't wake up trying to make my life better for my family and exploit every educational opportunity for my daughters and granddaughters like you do. And all my black friends, all my Latino friends, they're doing the same thing. They're doing the same thing. So to broadly paint us using the statistics that, the way that you did was unfair to this conversation. It's unfair to me. It was unfair to a lot of people like me. It was hurtful. And I hope that we can create this as an opportunity to heal. And in wrapping up what I need to say, I'm, I'm gonna say this. While I was very pained by your comments, I also do realize there's an opportunity. Should you choose to take it? And should I choose to take it? This is the most difficult discussion of our time, and it has been. It, it is the most difficult discussion of this country's time, and it has been historically. We can either have it the right way, where we create, or, I'm sorry, the wrong way, where we continually perpetuate more division and, and drive wedges, or we can try to have it the right way. Where we have it through a lens of trying to understand the idea of the other, trying to understand the experience of the other, just for a moment. Just try that. Just try to understand. I know you can never be a black man in this country, or a Latino man, or a person of color. I know you cannot, but I tell you what. If you just pause for a moment and tried to understand this country through our eyes, it may make you feel a little differently. And actually take some of this stuff into context. Talk to some of these folks. Don't just read about what you see. Read about us as a statistic. Talk to us. Understand. So I extend that to you, Councilmember, today. Despite how difficult this moment was for me, I am hopeful, uh, that you can view things slightly differently and open the door up for genuine dialogue. I know that there are a couple people here that I wanted to have come and speak, because they felt it was important to also address you. Some of these folks you've already spoken to, Councilmember. And some of them you haven't. And the first person I'd like to, uh, call up is Madeline Frazier. She's a student, uh, one of our young students at Buchanan High School, and who was particularly struck by, by your... Come on down, Madeline.
And just as a point of order, Member Baines, um, I do have a number of cards that will... So after, after you're finished with your remarks, you're gonna call some people up to speak. Then we'll go ahead and open it up to what we call unscheduled communication. Everyone who's filled out a yellow card, uh, will be welcome to speak. Wanted to take care of that item of housekeeping. Thank you.
Can you give her the other mic?
That does not work. Let's go ahead and give folks the handheld.
Hello, my name is Madeline Frazier, and I'm a junior at Buchanan High School. I come here today as a leader and as a daughter of a successful black man in white America that defies society's odds and came up from a fatherless home. I came also because I did not agree of, with a variety of things that were said in Councilmember Bedafield's speech regarding the controversial topic of the NFL players. You began by saying, quotes, "This started with Kaepernick taking a knee for the National Anthem." But the, did this issue really start here, or was it just popularized and made more aware by creating a chain reaction of other players and people taking a stand, or in this case, knee, for what they believe in? And rather than focusing on the issues that were brought to light and how to improve them, you were more concerned with Kaepernick's socks. Um, Councilmember Bedafield, you also assert that our National Anthem and flag represent the men and women who gave their life and limb for our country. That it reflects their sacrifice so that we can live in freedom and national ply and unity as a country. But did my ancestors not give their lives and limbs? Their livelihood, their dignity, et cetera, for this country? Did my ancestors not sacrifice so my brothers and my sisters could live in freedom? Because they did, for these reasons and the unity of our country and cultures. So by your interpretation of what the flag symbolizes, isn't it only logical for players who see the racial inequalities and abuse of power to kneel and protest the flag and National Anthem that does not stand for them? You also declare that, quote, "Taking our sta-" taking down and eradicating, wait, taking down our statues and eradicating our history. However, these Confederate statues that one wants to stand tall symbolize disunity, racism, pain, oppression, death, et cetera. They also symbolize the succession of the Southern states and that were dissatisfied with President Lincoln and his plan to contain slavery. I cannot begin to comprehend one defending these statues. You claim that taking them down will eradicate our history, but our history, my history, is already being eliminated, and that is sad." So so our history is already being eradicated, and it's not by the taking down of demeaning statues. You also quote, and when I say, "When talking about racism, the abortion industry is a racist institution." You should, you suggest that blacks have a higher abortion rate than whites, and it's racist. So does that mean because China has higher test scores than the US, does that make their testing racism, racist? You made it known that you disagree with a lot of things in this country, in a list. Well, I do not agree with some amount of things as well. I disagree with the jailing of the homeless population for not having anywhere to go and being out on the streets in our community. I disagree. I disagree with the discrimination of women, race, mental state, disabilities, religion, et cetera. I disagree with the school curriculums and what students are being taught. I disagree with black mothers worrying that when her son leaves through the front door, if it'll be the last time she sees him. And the list goes on. When discussing racism, you also declare, quote, "White men died to free black men." Did black men not die for the white men? Did black men not die at the hands of a white man for no other reason than their skin tone? You talk about the Jim Crow laws and say that they ended with a white president and the signing of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. But these laws should never have been implemented in the first place. You also mentioned that we had a black president that was elected. But that doesn't mean racism ended. It just means that Mr. Obama was the best-suited candidate for America at the time and was voted for by the people. You begin to give statistics on suicides, runaways, homeless, behavioral problems, high school dropouts, and youth in prison, and base these negative outcomes solely on the fact that they were from a fatherless home. Are you saying that their mother isn't strong enough or independent enough? That their father's presence is needed in order for a child to succeed? Because if you look back at all those unfortunate outcomes and the kids in that poll, a variety of reasons not related to not having a father at home as to why these events occurred, such as bullying, abuse, hate, discrimination, racism, and not the absence of a father. You transition back to the NFL players and express that, quote, "Athletes should be protesting crime and the culture of victimization." But isn't that what they're doing? Is a hate crime not considered a crime anymore? Aren't they protesting a cultural victimization when whites or other races say that our country is no longer racist? That we had a, we had a black president, or he shot in self-defense when a black male was unarmed? Because if you were referring to blacks playing victim, then I have to educate you further in the subject by saying that blacks are not playing victim. Because we have been attacked in many ways for years, and we have learned that we're not victims. We are leaders, we are survivors, and we are fighters. So I speak the truth, as you say, that instead of dwelling on statistics and your opinion, we should be attempting to improve these areas of our country and community that we lack in. Because there is fault in our systematic justice systems, our school systems, our school communities, and many more topics that we need to help locally before we criticize the NFL players for being leaders.
Thank you, Madeline. Talk about future leaders of today.
Talk about future leaders of today. Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity and giving my daughter the opportunity and the heart to come up here and speak to you. The other day, I wasn't going to speak, and then yesterday I went to go talk to my mom up in the Bay Area. It was her birthday, and I was with my educated mother. Some of you guys don't know my history, but I was with my educated mom that's an attorney, Jewish attorney, and I was with my uneducated mom that was on welfare, and I am that kid that came from a fatherless home and was living on the street. So when you're talking, when you're saying some of the things of rhetoric you're saying, I felt you were really speaking to me. And I said, you know what? I have to go back and speak back to you, Councilmember Brettafield. So I had two different perspectives that my educated mom gave me. When I asked her about this, and she said, wow, I can't believe that man talked like that, and he was a Jew. And she said, I'm glad he turned Christian, because they'll take anybody over there. My uneducated mother, y'all probably took off the microphone, but she said, let me get over here and see him. I'm gonna whip his... I go, Mom, you can't do that. But I got two different perspectives, but they both were like, you need to go speak, and you need to tell him how you feel, otherwise your voice won't be heard. And a lot of other kids that don't get the opportunity to speak, you have to speak for them. So this morning, I come to you not as a former professional athlete, a developer, a political contributor, or a community leader, but rather a father of five black children and a son of a mom that was on welfare. While I understand you have the right to disagree with the way NFL players have exercised their First Amendment right, I feel it's ironic that you easily criticize the platform used by these athletes because they are taking a stand at their employment site. Yet you turn around and use your public, elected, official platform to offend the thousands of people that pay your salary. Today, I'm here with my brothers and sisters to stand on behalf of my children and with sincere respect, educate some of you on some of the comments made in your chamber, in this chamber, that are so offensive to many of our children and us. In comments made in the chamber, it was suggested that black folks need to focus on following the rules of society, including police direction, stopping black-on-black crime, and fatherless As a father who came from a fatherless home, I have been forced to have unjust yet necessary conversations with my kids, not because they behave, misbehave, but because there are black boys and girls in America. My children were never allowed to play with toy guns, wear hoodies, nor search for their wallet in their pants during a routine traffic stop. Again, not because they are bad kids, but because our reality is clear, and any of this normal behavior could lead to their accidental death, a reality that clearly the council member and many others do not experience in their own lives. Like many others, I was caught off guard by these orchestrated comments that at best are filled with ignorance and at worst were purposely in the false narrative about the blight that exists in many of our communities of poverty. The kind of comments are not new for our country, so it did not surprise me. On a personal note, this incident was personally hurtful to me because I had to explain to my kids that the same council members that I associate with fund political campaigns for, work to revitalize Fresno and create jobs that can spew such rhetoric and allow it to go unchallenged. For that, I apologize to my children that I failed to teach them one more lesson, that such an ugly reality exists right here in their home too. I do the work. I do, because of my educated mom gave me the opportunity to finish what my uneducated mom wanted to do, which is helping out the poor, which is feeding the homeless, which is taking care of the people that can't speak. This all came from my uneducated mother that was on welfare and worked four jobs. So when you're talking about millionaires and people that are... When you talk about the NFL and stuff like that, I feel like you're talking to me, the guy that gets up at six o'clock in the morning, and I don't go to sleep till six, five o'clock at night, or five in the morning. I'm working 12 to 24 hours just so my kids can have a better life. So I did feel offended for that. And I'm gonna end it with saying, Gary, this is not a personal attack on you, by no means, but I'm glad you brought it out because you woke up a lot of black folks out here. So I thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Pastor Kleiner.
To our council president and to each and every one of our council members, to our city manager, and to the council member that today, as an African-American community and West Fresno community, we are proud to stand behind and to hold up the arms. We believe as members of faith that when Moses' arms got a little tired, that he had some people to come and hold his arms up. And more today, Oliver, than ever before, I can say that we are proud to hold your arms up. We are very proud. And before I get to a comment, too, Councilwoman Soria, and for the support that you've given through this period, we also applaud you as well. And to Ms. Yvonne, probably the pain that I have is that you were by yourself when those comments were made, but if you look in front of you, you can see you're not by yourself My councilman said all and more, and so I'll just highlight. To our council member Brettafield, we've met, myself, Pastor BT Lewis, and Dick and Ron Wiley, who is also a former sheriff, met with you in the office, kind of to discuss some of your remarks that has done more than just hurt, I think it has angered many of us. Our Bible teaches us to love others. So when Terrence' mother says that as Christians, we accept anybody, we do. But please understand that there is a clause to that acceptance. As Christians, we are taught, based on the Word of God, that we don't act and talk any old kind of way to each other as brothers of faith. You are a Christian, a very, a man who promotes Christianity, even to the point of fighting to get "In God We Trust" behind many of our council members and our council president right above his head. And on that particular day, it hurt me to see you stand underneath this "In God We Trust" and to see a man that's supposed to trust God and me lose trust in that man. The comments that you made, sir, disrespected a community of people that have for years felt disrespected, decades disrespected in this country. You made remarks that have already been stated, such as whites fought and died so that blacks could have freedom, without not one time referencing the fact that our freedom was taken from us when we were taken from our country, brought into a country that we did not ask to be in. And since the time that we've been here, we have fought to improve a country that never fought to improve us. For years, we fought in slavery, being whipped, whips on our backs, singing songs like "We Shall Overcome," excuse me, singing songs like "Wait in the Water," just so that we can get to an Underground Railroad, to be able to get to a place where we can be seen as somewhat but equal. And even in these yet-to-be United States of 2017, we are still not equal, and you proved that on that date that you spoke and said what you said. For an individual who is a Christian man to make remarks as you made, it separated or attempted to separate so many of us who are Christian brothers. When we're getting comments from those who are not Christians, asking us, is this how Christian white folks act? As black Christians, we don't call ourselves black versus white Christians. We call ourselves Christians. And those remarks you made were far from Christian. The Bible tells us that we are peacemakers, so on that day, you were not a peacemaker. The Bible tells us to speak up for those that have no voice. On that day, you spoke down to folks that have no voice. The Bible tells us that weeping only endures for night, but joy comes in the morning. But even to this day, our council member, though morning has come, they are still weeping and crying. Individuals are hurt. You allowed us to express that hurt today with anger. Individuals want us simply as black people, y'all, to simply be people that work for a country and smile when things are given to us. So when we get a bologna and cheese sandwich, our job is to smile while you get lobster. When we get a Chris's Meat Market, our job is to smile when you get a Root Chris Steakhouse. When we get a Dollar General, we are to smile while you get a Walmart and a Target in your district. My brother, we're tired of smiling. We're tired of people smiling at us, but at the same time, behind our back, or stabbing us. If you are called to represent a constituent that includes more than just white folks, then please understand that there are black folks in your district that also are hurt by the comments that you made. For the first three minutes and 14 seconds of your rant, excuse me, your comment, you referenced the NFL. Interesting enough, you reference NFL, and we don't have an NFL team in our city. At the three-minute and 15-second mark, you begin to reference African-Americans and brown Americans. At five minutes and 40 seconds of your statement, you begin to reference black-on-black crime. At six minutes and 21 seconds of your statement, you begin to reference fatherless generations. At eight minutes and 14 seconds of your statement, you begin to tell us that we should be encouraged and that we should not act as victims, because everyone is allowed the same opportunities in this nation as each, as no matter the color of their skin or the social class that they sit in. Fortunately, you haven't been around enough African-Americans alone, because, my brother, each time that you reference us, it's interesting that you reference a race that you are not. We are not asking you, my friend, to be a black man. We're not even asking you to step into a black man's shoes, because as African-Americans, as a black man, I never try to step into a white man's shoes. What I'm asking you is to see the shoes that we are walking in, and notice that those shoes that we've been walking in are worn, they're torn, our toes are showing, because these same shoes that we're walking have been passed down from generation to generation. We're walking in the shoes of our great-grandmothers, walking in the shoes of our grandmothers that walked on the streets of Montgomery, Alabama, Atlanta, that walked while the Civil Rights Act was being passed, that you said a white man passed, but a black man died so that it could be passed. We're walking in the shoes of our parents that for years had to sit inside of a school and be told and called a name that they had no right to be called. And now the shoes that we walk in, yes, our feet are showing, but our feet are proud to be showing, because we're proud that we're not walking in new shoes, we're walking in old shoes. So we have Desi Joneses that are here, the BT Lewises that are here, the Paul Binions that are here, individuals that have fought the fight that we are now, our generation is ready to fight. But this is interesting, my brother, as I take my seat, man. I'm not fighting against you. I want to fight with you, but I refuse to fight with someone that fights against my race. I want to fight with someone that even though they have an opportunity to speak in areas that I can't speak in, that will speak for me, through me. But, brother, when you speak against us and you bring statistics out that call us criminals in a way, that label us as individuals that are not humankind, my brother, what you do is, is you tell my people that fought to get you in the seat that you're in right now that we are nothing to you unless we hold up a flag that is almost nothing to us. Your patriotism is amazing, and I celebrate you for your patriotism. I'm grateful that you pledge allegiance to a flag. Brother, I pledge allegiance to a God that's above a flag, that died on a cross so that I can be equal, just like you are. So as much love as you have for a flag, I pray that one day you'll have the same love for the people that stand underneath it.
Good morning, Council, Council President Olivier, and to the rest of our council this morning, especially to my adopted council member, Paul Capriolio. Thank you for having me here. Well, you complained last time, and so I'm letting you know that I recognize you as my adopted councilperson. But anyway, here's my concern, that patriotism is always marginalized by the weight of tyranny. And we carry a weight in this country that no other people in this country really understands. After several meetings and much travail, it grieves me to have to stand here again and talk about a similar subject that we have talked about in the past. But I'm standing in this place again to bring your attention to the devastating impact of your words, Councilman Gary Brettafield, rendered from this very dais, a dais that should represent the whole of our city and not just the constituents that elected you. Again, after several meetings, including a meeting with Councilman Brettafield, we have determined, a group of ministers met at our church, and we determined that it was necessary to publicly denounce the extremely inflammatory and disconcerting remarks made by Councilman Brettafield. Under the guise of patriotism, love of flag, anthem, and country, Councilman Brettafield, you publicly made ill-informed and inappropriate statements that deeply harmed the residents of our city, in particular, the people in our African-American community. Councilman Brettafield, your statements were made from a place severely ignorant of African-American experience in this country. As a veteran and as someone who loves the military and this country, you should find the kneeling behavior of NFL players and owners during the playing of the National Anthem to be a celebration of their inalienable rights and the freedom of expression provided in our Constitution. To find our freedom of choice and speech repugnant is disrespectful to our freedom and misguided, as it dishonors the office in which you were elected to serve. It is in fact, it is a fact that the police in this country have been given the right to use extreme force and kill unarmed citizens by courts, blinded by their own racism. Our dissatisfaction with the scales of justice did not start with Colin Kaepernick kneeling during the playing of a National Anthem. African-American people have been unjustly profiled, wrongly convicted, and implicitly biased since our horrendous arrival upon the hypocritical shores of this nation. For me, this National Anthem and flag do not represent the men and women who gave life and limb for our country. It's always a reminder of this nation's hypocrisy and failure to fully acknowledge the contributions of African-Americans to this country's perceived greatness. Many of our ancestors shed blood, sweat, and tears, and we too pay taxes to enjoy the amenities offered in and by this country. Until you are black and have lived in our shoes, you will never understand we are still victims of social and economic slavery in this country. We do not have the same opportunities. We are not judged equitably. People that come to the United States voluntarily will never understand the racism deeply woven into the fabric of our systems, our institutions, and our cultures. Councilman Brettafield, you could have simply expressed your love for this country. You could have simply expressed your love for the flag, and you could have simply just expressed the love for the anthem, but instead, you reinforced a narrative that nourishes our victimization. You have potentially caused great harm to the relationships and work developed over a period of several years in this city by our chief of police and his department to engage the community and build trust in law enforcement. With one fair swoop, you almost killed years of work. We have proactively worked with our police and in our community to do everything possible to make sure that the violent behaviors seen across this country are never realized in the streets of Fresno. We tried to proactively approach a relationship with law enforcement in this city so that we won't have somebody shot unarmed and shot laying in the streets of our city. We tried to avoid a Ferguson in Fresno. We learned that, from Trayvon Martin's final experience on this earth, that an uninformed, self-appointed Caucasian vigilante can murder us anywhere and at any time, be exonerated, and even celebrated in this country. Your facts surrounding the Michael Brown murder in Ferguson, in Ferguson, Missouri, lack any foundation in reality. I went to Ferguson. I spoke with eyewitnesses. I stood in the driveway. It wasn't a street. It was an apartment driveway. I stood in the driveway where he was murdered by an overzealous, poorly-trained Caucasian coward named Darren Wilson, who shot an unarmed man with his hands in the air. Nevertheless, you grieve for the officer... Nevertheless, you grieve for the officer's career and not for the life of Michael Brown. You never, you will never understand our, our encounter with police because the privileges available to you, simply because of the color of your skin, allow you to, allow you benefits that we do not have. Let me reiterate that our absolute dissatisfaction with, with your, your statements, your lack of wisdom, unbridled arrogance, as, as you chose to make statements that broaden the chasm of racism and division in this city instead of building a bridge of peace. You cannot solve a problem with the same level of consciousness that created it. We are not all uneducated, we are not all, we do not all leave our children and our families, we do not all depend on government for our livelihood. The National Anthem and flag represent a nation steeped, steeped in New Age slavery and oppression. True reform will require a raising of our nation's consciousness and the consciousness of our leaders. It is clear that we do not live in the same country. If you, if you find it repulsive to serve the whole of our community, perhaps your service is no longer needed. In closing, here's a quote from you, "Only when we get away from the phony political narratives and agendas and deal with the facts will, will we really begin to solve these problems," end quote. It's my prayer, it's my prayer that God continues to bless this country in spite of our egotistical insensitive assumption that we are the greatest nation on earth. Patriotism is always marginalized by tyranny. Thank you.
Sherella Nicholson.
Is the other microphone available, or is this one okay?
Have your choice, but we did repair that one. I think somebody just pushed a button, turned it on.
All right. Good morning. Good morning, Council President Olivier, council members and staff. I would like to acknowledge all veterans, current and retired law enforcement officers, including Council President Olivier, Member Baines, and Member Brettafield. It pains me to be here today to address the remarks made by Councilwoman Brettafield on Thursday, September 28th. Mr. Brettafield, I appreciate your candidness and reflection on our community, and I'm here to share the same. I am saddened that you think so little of our community. You said, end quote, "to stop promoting the belief that if you're black, brown, or any person of color, if you're poor or any minority class, you're an inherent victim in our society." Every person regardless of color, gender, socioeconomic status is equal under the law in this country and the United States. Racism is a real thing in our country. My very being standing here before you is because your ancestors stole mine, drug them here on a boat more than 420 years ago. Because that happened, I dare not generalize an entire people because I know better. You are looking at the residuals of racism. I don't stand here as a victim, I am here because of the resilience and fight of people of color. You mentioned, quote, "white men died during the Civil War to end slavery." Why was there slavery in the first place? Black people have been in bondage in this country longer than we have been free. It is the resilience that we fought against being three-fifths of a person under the Constitution, fought Jim Crow laws, which was also legal in this country, poll taxing, which was legal, and presently redlining, which was also legal in the city of Fresno. We will continue to kneel, march, protest, and show up, and show out if we need to. Jim Crow just ended 52 years ago. And when Jim Crow ended, the government made redlining legal to keep black, brown, and poor white people confined to a certain neighborhood with no way out. You addressed real traumas in our community that we're dealing with, such as violence, low unemployment rates, infant mortalities. These are serious tragedies, and they are the residuals of racism and racist legislation. Sure, we have made progress in this country, but it was never given to us. We fought every hurdle in ideology like yours to have rights. Legislation put my community 400 years behind, so you can expect that we will be kneeling and protesting for another 350 years. Until you can no longer say, and this is your quote, "white people elect President Barack Obama." So if we look at it, that's an average of one non-white president every 219 years. We will be kneeling and protesting until the, the employment demographics reflects all residents in this building. We will be kneeling and protesting until resources are allocated with more than just equality. I'm talking about equity. We will be kneeling and fighting until the day we have representatives on the dais who understands the legal hardships that was placed on communities of color since before the Constitution was made, and understand the residual effects of poor bias legislation. We are not victims, Mr. Brettafield. We are leaders and conquerors and hurtlers. We hurdle and thrive against whatever unrighteous and uncivility that comes our way. Moving forward, I hope that you can use your platform and rhetoric to bring people closer together and not perpetuate racism further. Thank you.
Well, good morning. Is it still morning?
It is.
Good. President Olivier and council members, it's a pleasure to be here in some ways, and it's very disheartening to have to be here in others. But I want to first say thank you to my brother Oliver Baines for addressing. Did I push this on yet? Is it on? Okay. Thank you so much for bringing this attention and taking, having the courage to stand and call evil what it is. We have to learn that we have to call the evil man evil to the evil man's face in order to make a difference. I want to also, I also want to say thank you to my sister who is sitting there. We embrace you, my dear. We love you, we hate, we were not here standing with you. And to my pastors and other friends out there, I just love you all, and it's hard to follow them. But what I want to share with you today, Councilmember Brettafield, as I come to you as a 75-year-old senior citizen, I want to share a little bit with you, if you'll hear me, about my life story and about my journey. I am a retired educator. I retired as an assistant chancellor of a community college system. I've had the opportunity to sit where you all sit. I served on the Oakland City Council for a number of years and served as the vice mayor, the first African American woman vice mayor of that city. I have spent, though, the better part of my life fighting and struggling against injustices all over this nation. I worked in the civil rights movement for the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. I walked the streets of Georgia. I didn't watch it on TV, I walked it and did voter registration alongside of many. I walked with Mark Luther King, I didn't take him and go to a rally. I was at the March on Washington. I did all of those things that you talk about that people need to do to fight against racism. I had dogs sicced on me in Mississippi. I went to jail to stand for righteousness and for the people's right to stand and protest for what they need to protest in this country. I have been doing this for a long, long time. So your comments were not only painful, as the council member said, they were insulting, they were embarrassing, they were disrespectful for people like me who have spent the majority of their life fighting against injustices. I want to plead with you to do as others have said, walk in our shoes. Don't talk about what you think we have done, understand what we have given our lives, our sons, our daughters. Look at the population of the prisons in this country. Who filled those jails up? They're our sons and daughters. When you talk about the military and how proud you are to be a patriot, like we are not patriots, I would stand my patriotism up against yours and anybody else's. So when I used to stand, and I didn't just start this with cap, when I sat up on this Rossam as a council member in Oakland, when they stood and said the Pledge of Allegiance, I stood. But at the end of every time, and I do this this day, and people can attest to it, when you get through and you say, "peace and justice for all, liberty and justice for all," I say one day. And I say it loud because it is not yet today. And I'll be glad when I can stand and say it without adding that at the end of that statement. We are not free yet. We don't have justice yet. And if our young people want to take a knee, I'm taking a knee with them. You get that? I'm standing with them. Because they've earned the right, and I've earned the right, to protest peacefully against whatever the injustices are that still exist in this nation. So I want to say to you, when you talk about the military and people dying for us, who do you think have paid the price the most? You look now, when we go to war, who was the majority of people, the percentages, fighting the Vietnam War? Don't you think African American young boys and men lost their life for our freedom to protest? They did. Don't you, do you remember when you talk about the Tuskegee Airmen? Who flew in a racist service to fight for our, those were our men. When you think about the segregated war, uh, army in back of the Civil War, our people fought and they didn't have boots and shoes to fight with because they were not given that opportunity. So let me just say to you, my brother, I want you to work with us. I want you to feel what we feel. I want you to move away from the generalizations and those things that you have come to believe in your heart. And what I want to do is leave you with something that I hope, I know you won't wear it, I'm going to give you one of my bracelets, and I want you to put it on your desk. And hopefully, every day, you could take a look at that and remember all of these people in this room, all of these people standing here that are leaders, they are not victims in our community, but they are fighting on and on for justice. And I want you to, I'm going to present this to you, a city clerk, please, to give to him. I want you to look this every day, it says, "Black Lives Do Matter." Thank you very much.
Ray? Ray? Come down and prep the video. And, and lastly, yeah, Aubriana can do it?
Okay. And lastly, Councilmember, a citizen of this city who was also an NFL athlete on the Pittsburgh Steelers, felt a certain personal offense because you mentioned there, an incident that happened with their team, his name is Robert Golden. He's a, a former Fresno, and he, his family's still here, and he wanted to make sure, Edison Tiger, he wanted to make sure that, obviously, your remarks got back to him, and, and he wanted to talk about the incident that you referenced in your remarks.
My name is Robert Golden. I am a current Pittsburgh Steeler, and I'm a Fresno community. I came to address the whole situation about one of my teammates. Hello, my name is Robert Golden. I am a current Pittsburgh Steeler, and I'm also a native of the Fresno community. I came to address the whole situation about one of my teammates, one of my brothers, Alejandro Villanueva. It was a total myth about how we shamed our brother and made him go out and apologize to the media for going out and standing in the National Anthem. That was totally incorrect, and I wanted to address that. It was great attentions on Alejandro Villanueva, and by no means were we upset at him, by no means did we make him apologize. Together as a, as a unit, as a team, we decided to stay in a tunnel so that we can be unified as a team. We have guys that come from different areas and different backgrounds, and some may have wanted to stand, and some may would have wanted to kneel. So as a team, we decided to stay in a tunnel and be unified. But by no means were we mad at Alejandro, by no means were we ashamed about what he did, you know? It was just executed wrong, but it had great intentions. I feel like as a Fresno community, there's so much that we can be focused on in Fresno to improve our city rather than focusing on what's going on in the National Football League. As a whole, there's a lot of focus that we can focus on there, and I feel like if we put our attentions there, instead of focusing on what's out of our control, we can become a better nation. If we stay together and stay united, we can make this world a better place.
And that ends, I thank you to all the speakers that I called up. I appreciate your time, I appreciate your passion. I know exactly how difficult it is for all of us to address this, but I know it was important to all of us, for all of us to do this in response to Councilmember Brettafield's remarks. And Councilmember, as I conclude my remarks, I'm going to end with where I ended before, that I think this community would like to open the door to you, to give you more insight and understanding. Your remarks, as has been said, were painful and hurtful, and in many cases ignorant and without the proper context, but that does not mean that they have to stay there. And I am, I am willing to continue this dialogue with you and whomever is willing to join, join us in Fresno so that this city can have the dialogue correctly. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Baines. I wanted to just take care of a matter of housekeeping. The time is 11:17. Member Soria, you're going to speak next, and then we're going to, I will go ahead and close council member reports and comments. We will go out to the public and hold unscheduled communication. That's the time that people can speak on any item that's not covered on the agenda. So we will enable folks to speak. I have, I have 21 cards of folks who wish to speak, and usually there are five or six who don't fill out cards who come up to speak. So at 21 cards, if we do three minutes, it will take 63 minutes, which will put us at roughly 12:20 before we wrap up our remarks. Typically, we go to lunch at noon, we'd like to stick with that because there's business to, to conduct after, and also to be respectful of the time of folks who, who came out this morning, dedicated their mornings to speak at this item. So also after public communication, Councilmember Brettafield has requested if he could speak after. And so if, in an interest of getting to everyone, and even I need to stop talking right now, but in an interest of getting to everyone before lunch, and also getting an opportunity to hear from Member Brettafield, we typically do three minutes of public comment. I'm going to reduce that, I've spoken to Member Baines, we're going to reduce that to two minutes per speaker. Hopefully, we can get everyone out by about 12:20, 12:15, 12:20, and then we can, we can all go on with, with the rest of our day. So with that, I do want to turn it over to Member Soria, who's punched up for council member comments. Then we'll go out to the public, and then we'll come back here, close public comment, and hear from Councilmember Brettafield. So thank you all very much.
First, I'd like to thank Council President for allowing me to just say a few remarks and just in the interest of time, because I would like to give the opportunity to the public who has taken time out of their day to be here and, and share their sentiments. But I do just want to say that I want to join my colleague Oliver Baines, my brothers and sisters who have already spoken on their remarks and, and sharing that this has been painful, and also seeing the pain that exists within our community, you know, and the feelings that are out there right now, given the fact that our council colleague Brettafield shared, made a conscious decision to share his feelings and perspective on the NFL Anthem protest. I will tell you that as a woman of color, as a Latina, I also found these statements very hurtful and offensive. And I think while we don't see many of our Latino brothers and sisters here, I know that they too were offended and are hurt to hear just the statements that you made and you- shared by my colleague Brettafeld are not mine, and that I am hopeful that they are not reflective of the counsel that is before you guys today. And I hope that we hear from the majority of our council members, that that's not where the city of Fresno is today. We are a diverse community, and it is the diversity that makes this city a great place. But as was just shared by my colleague Oliver Baines, this moment really provides us an opportunity to make our history right, to fix the systematic inequities that we have in place, not only in our nation, but here in our city of Fresno. There's a lot of work to be done, and I know that this council, if we put our minds to it, we can do the hard work to address the inequities that exist. If we look at the most southern part of this city, we have poverty, we have economic challenges that this body needs to be focused on to address those inequities that exist within our community. Rather than tear our community apart, we need to be lifting up each other to make sure that we're successful. Because if one part of the, if only one part of the town is successful, our city won't be successful together. We need to make sure that we work together. And so I hope that we take this opportunity to continue the dialogue that is needed, but really do the hard work to ensure that we tear down the systematic inequities that exist here in the city of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Soria, for your remarks. And now, we'll go out to the public and open unscheduled communication. The first thing I'll do is start calling cards. After that, if you haven't filled one out, you still have an opportunity to speak. I'll call for you to come forward. About halfway through your presentation, you will hear a tone. That's just a one-minute reminder to wrap up. You have one minute to wrap up. It does not mean that you have to stop speaking. So we'll go ahead and begin with Stacy Williams. I'll call three or four folks so that they can line up, in the interest of time, it's typically what we do, followed by Tate Hill. Sharila already spoke. Do you wish to, you have a card? She's, okay. And then Rabbi Rick, and then Burnett Harris. So you have two minutes. If you could give us your name and address for the record, please, you'll have two minutes.
Stacy Williams, 5037 West Harvard, 93722. I'm in Councilmember Baines' district. This is going to be hard and emotional, just like it was for Councilmember Baines. I have an African-American husband and three children, and I notice every day that I am treated better than they are, and that is sad. And you standing up there and saying that proved your privilege, and you used your supremacy to, you are not nearly as strong as the people that are back here. The African-Americans that are sitting behind me, you couldn't endure half of what they deal with a day. Half of the atrocities that they deal with every day, they do not play the victims. They get up every single day and do what they have to do every single day. Talking down on them and negatively on human beings that are being marginalized, people who have had hundreds of years of abuse, systematic, physical, mental, emotional racism, is really sad. Your black-on-black crime comment shows your ignorance. All ethnicities actually have the same crime rates due to proximity. It is not, white-on-white crime is the same percentage as black-on-white crime. That is inaccurate, and you use those false narratives to push negativity on black people. The statistics that you're using are not accurate. It's actually lazy and detrimental to the people that are behind us. White-on-white crime is the same as black-on-black crime. Do some research, talk to people outside of your comfort zone. Your statements about abortion, follow-through list homes, and police murdering black people are insensitive and completely inaccurate. Police brutality statistics are real and accurate and show disproportionate numbers of people of color affected. You need to wake up and look outside of your privilege and your position in this city and talk to people and find out. My sons are pulled over at higher rates than I am. My sons look at me and say, "Mom, if we're with you, you'll be pulled over. We don't want to be in the same car with you because we put you in danger." Do you hear that? My sons do not want to be in the same car with me because they think them being 6'2", 250 pounds, and black, put my life in danger. Should they have to live with that? No. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tate Hill, followed by Rick Weiner, followed by Burnett Harris. Give us your name and address for the record, please, you'll have two minutes.
Tate Hill. Tate Hill, 825 North Arthur Street. Initially, I wasn't going to say anything today, but I thought it really important to speak to this matter. I was actually in Washington DC when I got a call about the comments that Councilmember Brettafeld made. I was ashamed, I was embarrassed, I was angry, because this is the city that I live in and that I'm a part of. And these are the things that we often hear about our community. Fresno is racist, Fresno is discriminatory, Fresno is prejudiced. And there are people every day working to fight against that stereotype and that narrative for our community. And unfortunately, you have drug us back to that same narrative this month. I was there to advocate for money for our community, and these are the perceptions that people have. There is a higher expectation for you as a council member, the position that you're in, we have a higher expectation. This is not social media, this is not the street corner. When you are up at that dais, we have an expectation that you represent the entire city. And so I would say to you, Councilmember Brettafeld, and really to all the council members, this kind of activity, this kind of language is not acceptable. It will not be tolerated, it will not be allowed. We have a higher expectation of you, especially even also as a Christian. And I just want to read this one scripture that I had a chance to see, and I think it speaks to this. It says, "I am full of wrath of the Lord, but I cannot hold it in. They dress the wounds of my people as though they are not serious. Peace, peace, they say, where there is no peace. Are they ashamed of their detestable conduct? No. They have no shame at all, they do not even know how to blush." Again, Jeremiah 6 and 11. This is not acceptable, this is not our city, and I pray that our council will never allow this kind of conversation to happen again.
Thank you for your comments. Rabbi Rick, okay. Burnett Harris, followed by Diane Smith, followed by Dottie Smith. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Burnett Harris, and I'm with the Heat for Southwest Fresno Community. It doesn't shock me at all at the things that come out of your mouth. And not even, I'm going to speak on a dais too. Because if you allow things like this to happen and don't speak up, you condone it. Every last one of you, when he made that statement, should have had something to say. If you didn't have it to say then, the following Thursday, you should have had something to say. Not when you see the community coming forth to say something. Because it's very offensive for someone to say things like that. But it doesn't shock me, for the simple reason, we come before this dais, and we are not heard. I have to call your attention to even listen. It's nothing shocking to us. And so far as a flag representing our culture, Diane have given you some paperwork on that. But it's very offensive, and that's just like you're saying, so far as two minutes, we would have liked to have had three minutes. But by you cutting it off and saying you had other things to do, what we have to say is very important too. So if you have to sit there through the three minutes, you should have sit there. And it's very offensive even to our mayor, he should have spoke up. He should have had something to say. We have been, we have been brought over here on that boat. We have been made to serve you. We have been made to serve every nationality in the state, in the United States. We have been slaves. And for you to make a statement like that, you don't even know what it is to be black. If you was, you'd blow your brains out because you couldn't stand it. We deal with this crap each and every day. And everybody on this dais, you have condoned it because you didn't say a word. You should have said something. And I, like I say, I love you because you stood there, you sit there, and you took it. And that's what we have to do, we have to stand and take it. Like I say, Oliver, if you guys had to stay to midnight tonight, we should have had our three minutes.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Diane Smith. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Diane Smith, 1540 West Los Sierra Drive, West Fresno. To me, it's surprising that it's taken us, the NFL or any other black group, to stand up and say enough is enough. When I was in elementary school, I lived in an agricultural town not far from here. We were at a friend's house. The kid next door was white, created problems. The police were called. When the police got there, we had the guns pulled on us. I didn't tell my parents until I was an adult what happened, because I knew what they would do. They wouldn't have stood for it. And we lived in a racist town then, and we live in a racist city now. But the things that I want to say is this, that incident taught me something. I started reading more than ever. One of the things that I found out was, hm, the Pledge of Allegiance. It didn't take in me, because it says, "Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We weren't getting it, so I stopped. I am now 64 years old, I have not said the Pledge of Allegiance or did anything in regards to that since I was in junior high. When I was asked why I stopped by a teacher, I told her, "Because it's not true. I will not say it again until it is true." I'm still not saying it. When you talk about the National Anthem, I handed out the document I wanted you guys to look at, because the third stanza tells it all. It is one of the most racist documents written, even though it was written as a poem. What he did, and the reason why he wrote it, is this. Blacks began to serve the British. Black slaves that were free ran away. They were called the Colonial Marines. They kicked Francis Scott Key's ass. He could not stand that because they were supposed to be inferior to him. So he wrote this. And in that third stanza, it tells you how he felt about us. And the thing of it is, is that is not what we're taught in school, that stanza is totally left off. So everybody needs to educate their kids that this thing is racist, and that's why I don't do it.
Thank you for your comments. Dottie Smith. Julia Dudley.
Good morning, chairman, members of the council, and pastors, and those in the audience. I just want to come here to say this. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not accusing. But in the words of Langston Hughes, I want to say, "I too sing America. I too am a child of America." And when I look at the council and some of you around here, I can also say, is this...
Oh, you're great. We've got you off that mic.
I can also say this. Having been a teacher of American history, government, the United States Constitution, so I do know a little about the Constitution, having taught geography and modern world history, I do know a little bit about what's going on in the world. But I just want to say this, having been a Brownie, I do know how to fold the American flag. I do know how to lift it on the flagpole. So I too sing America. But in the words of James Baldwin, and I think I've heard it here today, to think about all the injustices that African-Americans have had to go through in this country, we've been enraged every minute, so we don't think about it. What we do as African-Americans, we try to make it better. And I need to say this to Dr. Brettafeld. When I was a principal in Southwest Fresno, he did some of his research at my school. So he knows that, he saw those beautiful black and brown kids, so he knows there's potential. And as I read his comments and heard, listening to him, I was wondering, how could he say that? He was on a campus in Southwest Fresno where he saw the beauty of our community, these young people. He saw me as a black African-American principal. So he know that's good in Southwest Fresno. He know there's good in the black community. And I want to say this too, when I heard about, you know, the single-parent homes, no fathers, I was a single parent, and both of my children are college graduates. The thing that happens in the African-American family is that, as I've heard, and I'm not going on and on and on, because it's all been said, is that we do care. Education has always been important. But the thing that happens when I hear comments like this, I say, "What do I tell my children who are black?" Because my family told me, "Get an education and we better." This is 2017, so what do we think? So what do I tell my students? What do I tell my children who are black? Is it going to always be this way? And when I know an educated person like you who have seen the potential, because as a principal, you were at my school, you saw black teachers, you saw the black community, so how could you say that? That is why I'm up here speaking to you.
Thank you.
And I want you to know that when we talk about, you could never walk in my shoes as an African-American. But when we know the history of slavery, we know a little bit about the white population here. Because there was a black mammy who taught you how to be black, white. It was a black mammy who said, "No, no, you don't do this, missy." It was a black mammy who said, "This is the way you talk, this is the way you dress." So we do know a little bit about the white history in this country, because we taught you how to be white.
Thank you.
But the point of the matter is, even when we were doing that, we were not allowed to learn how to read, write. But those of us who did do it, in some instances, we kept the books. That being the money books, and we know in this country, it's important about money. So even when we go back in history, we know that there have always been strong black minds in this country. So to put us down, talk about our homes, and I know as a poor black girl growing up in Southwest Fresno, didn't have running water or bathroom in my house until I was a ninth grader at Washington Union High School, so I know about being poor.
Thank you.
And I also know about the importance of education. That is all I ever heard. My grandfather used to say, "You get an education, and they can't take that away from you." But why should my heart be broken when I walk in my country and I still see the misery, the pain, and the suffering? And when you talk about the military, I have three brothers in the military, one in the Marines, one in the Navy, and one as a drill sergeant in the United States Army. All my time is up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments.
You will hear from me later.
Now we have Julia Dudley, and I don't want to mispronounce your last name. Thank you.
Julia Deli Najib. Good afternoon, and I'd like to say good afternoon to the community and also the city council. Live at 2890 Huntington Boulevard, Fresno, California. Mr. Brettafeld, I was taken by your comments, and I wanted you to know this part of the history. The Star Spangled Banner, written by poet Francis Scott Key in 1814, has four verses. As you know, we only sing the first, there's a reason for that. The third is the reference to slavery. But Mr. Key himself also owned slaves, I want to make sure you're aware of that. He was an anti-abolitionist and once called the African brethren, a distinct and inferior race of people. Mr. Brettafeld, I am a surviving product of my great-great-grandmother who was a slave, my other great-great-grandmother who was a slave and escaped to the Blackfoot Mountains in South Carolina, and luckily was housed by the Native American and is why I'm able to stand before you today. My father, who served the military, Air Force engineer, because of his skin tone, was not able to fly the planes. But he did all the engineering, and then they put him on the Special Forces, where he would report directly to our President Kennedy at the time, because of his background in martial arts. My son also serves in the Navy. In 1916, you need to know that President Woodrow Wilson signed the executive order designating the Star Spangled Banner as the National Anthem. But 1931 is when the Congress, US Congress, passed it, and yet Jim Crow was still alive. Racism was still alive. My son also serves in the Navy. In 1916, you need to know that President Woodrow Wilson signed the executive order designating the Star Spangled Banner as the National Anthem. But 1931 is when the Congress, US Congress passed it, and yet Jim Crow was still alive. Racism was still alive. My grandparents were still alive and lived in this community. I, being from the Silicon Valley, was called nigger every day. My dad worked and did contracts with Bill Gates, Steve Jobs. He was one of the first persons to engineer and build the first computers, and yet he will never get that recognition, along with other African Americans that also served and will never get that recognition, as a Stanford and Yale graduate. My kids were pulled over. My brother was beat up in front of my, our house when I was growing up because they didn't believe that he lived there. And this was an affluent neighborhood and yet I still had a very troubled past dealing with that stress, watching Five Cups beat him up because they didn't believe he lived there. I would suggest that you talk to some of us. I would suggest that you hear our stories. And you represent us. You are supposed to be that voice for us. And so let this be the learning experience and let this be that change where that you're willing to do that and not just listen to the rhetoric or the statistics that don't always make sense. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Eric Payne, followed by Tanisha Taylor, followed by Andy Levine.
Respectfully, racism is so American that when we peacefully protest racism, the average American thinks we're protesting America. We must change the racial narratives. People must define who they are in their own way and describe their challenges in their own words. How we define people ultimately determines how we define solutions. Reframing narratives is flipping things on their head to expose deeper truths. And you did just that, Councilman Brettafield. And I thank you for creating the space to have a courageous conversation around racial equity. I ask that you listen with the heart to learn and grow from your hurtful comments and leave the dais today with an understanding diversity and inclusion needs to be elevated, even within institutional systems such as this. And I'm going to ask that you champion diversity and inclusion within this system and deliver. Because understanding that a system that privileges some people's safety and freedom over other people's safety and freedom can't be called a justice system. And I know in your heart and from many of our conversations that we've shared, we have a shared value and God we trust. And I know the gospel speaks to equity, just and fair inclusion, which should be at the forefront of all of our policy decisions. Because if we're thoughtful and intentional, we can move the needle on equity and inclusion here, closing the gap. We have to do better. And how do we do better? You can start by developing the City of Fresno Office of Equity and Multicultural Affairs. Because on a scale from zero to Harriet Tubman, how courageous will you lead?
Thank you for your comments. We have Tanisha Taylor, Andy Levine, and then Bishop Charles Dickerson. Tanisha Taylor, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Tanisha Taylor, 4240 East Lael Avenue. A lot of my feelings and emotions was already stated previously for Brettafield. But I did want to bring point to, in your comments, you stated that you did disagree with President Trump when he used derogatory terms towards our athletes. However, you followed up with the but. And the but is a conjunction word. That means what was just said is not as important as what I'm about to say. And what you followed up with after that but is all of the negativity and the statistics about our African American culture, which is stating that, as if we haven't already been oppressed enough, you bring all this negative action towards our culture. And as a representation of us, we're looking to you to stand for us. So you speak about the athletes kneeling and taking a stand, but you don't want to stand behind us. Instead, you make these comments and drive these wedges between our races instead of coming in and you had that opportunity to bridge that gap. So I ask that when we take a stand, you take a stand with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Andy Levine, Bishop Charles Dickerson, Sean Riggins. And Andy, give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have two minutes.
Good morning, Council. Andy Levine, 4147 East Dakota. I'm here today also in support and solidarity with those who, like me, were greatly offended and concerned by the recent racist comments denouncing and dismissing the patriotic, peaceful protests of athletes across our country who are using their influence in pursuit of an America that lives up to its ideals of equality and opportunity. Despite the attempt to hijack the message behind those taking a knee into being about disrespecting the military or the flag, I believe that those taking a knee are as patriotic as it gets. They are peacefully protesting disproportionate numbers of African American men and women gunned down by law enforcement, almost every single one of whom are left off without any punishment. They are also shining a light on continued overt racism and bigotry, as we've seen not only recently in Charlottesville, but even right in our own backyard last week in Clovis, as well as ongoing systemic racism, which continues to leave African Americans in particular and people of color in general with far fewer opportunities to a decent education, job, and quality of life. We don't need to look beyond Fresno to understand what this looks like. There is a reason why residents of West Fresno live on average 20 years less than their counterparts in northeast Fresno. There is a reason why 93706 has literally the most polluted air in the entire state. There is a reason why residents of color have a mistrust and fear of law enforcement. These are incredibly serious life and death issues in our city and country, none of which have easy answers. But one thing I do know is we will absolutely never figure them out when our elected leaders are far more focused on political statements that dismiss, diminish, and divide. We need all of us to listen to each other, recognize that there are deep divisions and inequities in our city, and genuinely sit at a table to try and get there together. And finally, as a white male, I feel a particular moral obligation to stand up and speak out and to make it, for all of us, make it our life's duty to address the longstanding racism, bigotry, and inequity across our country and in our city. And finally, I know it's been said, but Sister Spence, I am, as a white male, I am sorry. You deserve far, far better.
Thank you for your comments. Bishop Charles Dickerson, please give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have two minutes.
Charles Dickerson, 2513 North Knoll, Fresno. I stand today as the pastor of a local congregation, African American male, obviously. Here with a high moral and holy obligation, I feel to counter the statements of Council Member Brettafield two weeks ago. In your delivery, sir, you stated and affirmed your love for the country, this country, your respect for the flag, and your convictions to stand, not kneel during the National Anthem. While you may stand and not kneel during the Pledge of Allegiance, I suggest you stooped, you stooped to a low place when citing unfounded erroneous statistics relative to the African American community. I believe you stooped to a low place when you not only cited unfounded statistics, but you perpetualized tokenism, reading a list of accomplished individuals, President Obama, Connolly, Surice, Colin Powell, et cetera, not attributing their success to their own merit or education, but rather the vote of a lofty and needful permission of a white man. You stooped to a place that revealed your oblivious nature to your own privilege, what's commonly called white privilege. The claims of inequality and racial victimization are not a false narrative, as you call them, but rather they are a reality for black, brown, and minorities at large. It's a reality. If I'm stopped by the police, I have three immediate alarms, big black man. The most concerning is being a black man. In short, I believe your statements are the epitome of bigotry that fuel division, the embodiment of institutional racism. The Bible says, to whom much is given, much is required. I believe it's required of you, sir, to take ownership for what you have literally polluted this community with. I think that you owe an apology to this community. My initial and very short-coined phrase prior today was retract or resign. That's my opinion. You should retract or resign. After sitting here today, I believe you should rethink your statements, give opportunity for growth for this entire community. Needless to say, we are hurt, we are offended.
Thank you for your comments. Sean Riggins, Celeste Harrell, Pastor James Parks. Please give us your name and address for the record, please, and you will have two minutes.
Sean Riggins, 1040 East Dorothy. Members of the council. Mr. Brettafield, that uncomfortable feeling you're feeling now, that's how many of us feel every day. You're not, you're not the only person to serve your country. But unlike many, you do not have to be called a nigger by the people you serve for decades after your service. You don't have to experience being pulled over despite never having been arrested because you fit the profile, or simply out walking in the neighborhood you live in because others believe that you don't belong there. I brought a picture today with me. This picture shows my late father Reverend Chester Riggins and his twin brother Lester Riggins, from the January 10th, 1946, front page of the Fresno Bee Sports Page. This picture is a picture of them when they were 18 years old, receiving their military orders to go to the army. Neither one of them, while they were 18, had an idea of the history that they would soon play. My father didn't know that after 46 years of serving the community, he would have a street in the city of Fresno named after him. His twin brother did not know that he would retire from the Air Force as a lieutenant colonel and would be appointed by the Governor of California, Jerry Brown, as the Director of General Services for the State of California. Yet these men faced those issues I mentioned earlier, of being called a nigger after serving their country. Also, both were denied the GI Bill after serving their country. Your words on September 27th were dangerous, divisive, and a slap in the face to many. Comments like yours made it easier for high school students to make inappropriate comments on social media, like the recent comments that we had at Clovis Unified a couple weeks ago, when they see public officials make those comments. And I want to end by asking this question. Since you were so outraged and incensed over football players kneeling during the National Anthem, and by the way, that action was recommended to Colin Kaepernick from the Green Beret as a respectful way to protest. As a military veteran and as a psychologist that worked at the VA with veterans, were you outraged when Mr. Trump referred to Senator McCain, who was a war hero? When he said, a war hero isn't a war hero because he was captured? When he said, I like people who weren't captured? Did those words offend you? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Celeste Harrell, Pastor James Parks. And then we have Louis Marquez. Please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
To the citizens downtrodden, oppressed, this first. To the City of Fresno, the Police Department, the Courts, I'm Celeste Harrell. My address is 1375 North Archie. I'm here to demand the resignation of Councilmember Gary Brettafield. I hear all too often about how the government wants to address the issues of systemic institutional racism, supported by white supremacy, yet I see no action. Prove to me today, prove to the citizens and prove to the world that there is zero tolerance here in Fresno for the kind of intolerance this council member so openly expressed in his remarks during a special meeting on September 28th. What are we to expect next from him with his outdated mindsets? The spawning of another Charlottesville, Las Vegas, Aurora here in Fresno? His resignation is necessary. To remove him from his position of power is a clear indication that we as a community want a thriving community. The resources being filtered into the city's success and growth will be for naught as long as we hold the title for the most dense urban areas with concentrated poverty as our key demographic in the population. The leadership, tone, and language of this council member is categorically inappropriate and unacceptable. No apology is required. He has to vacate that seat. He is a district rep. However, his work must benefit the entire collective city. The chronic presence of concentrated poverty in this city is because of representatives who work for the benefit of the dominant white population. Personally, as a black person here, I'm not going to take racism lightly. It's no longer accepted, especially from people that have to represent the entire population. This member's views represent a conflict of interest when we consider the diversity of the population of Fresno. He has committed violations of Ethic Code Number Four, Five, and Eight, exclusively Number Nine, and he has to go.
Thank you. Pastor James Parks. Louis Marquez is the last card. Pastor, please give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
James Parks, P.O. Box 25751. To the President, my friend Paul, and Oliver, and all the other council members. I title this Truth Matters. Racism exists in this city. And as a pastor, I'm able to say that it will never cease to exist as long as white church leaders don't step forward and help us address these issues. Let's look at some truths. Number one, during slavery, Jim Crow and the civil rights movement, the white church, for the most part, winked at racism and in some instances promoted it. Number two, we have now in the White House a narcissistic, self-professed sexual predator who is a prolific pathological liar, who has said that he has never asked God for forgiveness. Yet he's in there because so many church members who say they love Jesus and love righteousness supported him. Number three, Donald Trump is a master manipulator who has mastered the use of diversionary tactics. He manipulated his way into the White House. Now Colin, he protested violence against black men in July of last year. Why is it that Trump didn't say anything, didn't get outraged until this year? Is it because he's so impotent as a president, so incompetent? Is it because he's trying to distract from what's happening in Puerto Rico or with the Russian investigation? Or because his own cabinet member called him a moron? He's a master at diversionary tactics. Don't let him do it again. He has changed the narrative from what Colin said to what he wants you to believe. When you look at Colin Kaepernick, look past that Afro and the man who's willing to give up millions of dollars, look at that man's heart. Why, he's hurt because of what happens to black people in this country. If Trump wants to defend the flag, defend it when the KKK uses it in their marches. Where is the outrage from Trump and Pence and from, dare I say, from my own council, when I live in your district, brother? Where is the outrage when the KKK spewing that hatred and bigotry? March under that flag. You want to defend the flag? Defend it then. Too many unarmed black men have been killed. Eric Garner said 11 times, I can't breathe. He's been killed by a white police officer who is using a chokehold that's been outlawed by the Police Department. 11 times, they killed him. He died, the man walked away.
Pastor Parks, thank you.
I have much more to say. I'd like to be with you, brother. God bless all of you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Our next speaker is Louis Marquez. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have two minutes.
Good morning, City Council. I'm going to change it up here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to change it up here, just something to do with, with all due respect. I want to change it up here, pertaining to the City of Beautification Project. All right. Can you hear me now? Okay, better. Okay, better. So my idea here today is having to do with the city. I want to, I want to be able to provide something, I was here before and I think I caught Mr. Steve Brandell's attention, and I wish it would have gone further, it didn't, so I'm going to take another approach at it. And this was prior to that, was a brick idea. My idea today is having to do with a southeast corner of this property of City Hall. If we can bring something to the citizens of Fresno, if not for the visitors that are coming into Fresno in the gateway, I want them to be able to see something that's more appealing to the eye. And again, this is the southeast corner, people are waiting for the train to go by, sometimes it's a false, and they're waiting there, and besides, look at the Amtrak, which is a nice attraction, probably the best and only attraction in that area, I want them to look at something that's, there's a shrub right there in that corner. If we can eliminate that shrub and plant some bricks there and maybe erect a stainless steel artifact or some kind of monument, at nighttime it'd be lit up, but it's a gateway and people coming into Fresno might say, hey, this is already looking like a nice city. Eliminate the shrub, make it more visible for the people of Fresno and the visitors, they might find it more pleasurable to come in. Again, allowing the artifact to go up and eliminate that shrub, it might make it more better for the city of Fresno. Won't cost a lot, but it may cost a lot if something happened pertaining to a predator hiding behind the brush and attacking somebody. But I think a small artifact or monument going up there, again, lighting up like Fresno State has in their, in their property, might be a good thing for the city. So again, I hope to work with the city, and I got many, many more ideas. So I hope to work with the city again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council that has not filled out a yellow card? Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Reverend Sharon Aver, the pastor of Carter Memorial African Methodist Episcopal Church, 795 North Fruit Avenue. I stand here of a daughter that did not have a father, because he was a decorated officer who died in Vietnam so that you could say the things that you said. A mother who worked two jobs, but at one point worked with the Governor Brown to establish early childhood development program. Of a sister who helped write the HIPAA program for California. A person that's three degrees. I thank you for taking the sheet off your face. I thank you for letting us know who you truly are. So they say that we have to know the devil to be able to deal with the devil. I pray that because you say that you're a Christian, that God convicts your heart and he deals with you according to your righteousness, and that one day you can see us as human beings and out of people who need to be pitied, looked down upon, or shot as animals. Thank you.
Hi Pastor Sims, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please, and then you'll have two minutes.
Tom Sims at 4141 Ministries, 4141 North Fresno Street. I am a white, Southern Baptist pastor who was raised in the South. I attended an all-white elementary school that was integrated when I was in the seventh grade by two brave young women that I continue to love and admire. I went to a high school in the eighth grade that before I graduated became predominantly I had a mother and a grandmother who I believe were as enlightened as they could be for their time and place. And my heart began to break as a child. I don't represent anybody today, except I, I don't, I don't represent anyone today. I've never represented anyone really in most of my views. I remember the first time I stood alone on this issue. And I can't even approach the pain and the suffering and the agony of those that in my little feeble way I tried to stand for. I really was not going to speak because I wanted to come and encourage my African-American brothers and sisters to speak for themselves, because I've so often felt that we've tried to be the great white fathers and mothers, but I don't, I don't want to be, I don't, I don't want the day to go by with anyone being able to say that a white Christian pastor didn't stand up and speak against racism. This is the defining moment of our city, and this is the defining issue of our nation today. There is no more important issue before us, and whatever raises it, whatever brings it up, it makes it the time to confront it and to bring some reality. The overt racism that I was surrounded by growing up, the days I was not silent and the days I was silent to my shame, has simply been recycled into a more acceptable narrative, a reinventing of history, a reframing of the narrative, a reframing of our perspective. And we all want to tell things from our perspective. Well, I have a perspective, and it's a multiple perspective. I watched my own father change many of his attitudes, and I'm grateful for that, but nothing changed his attitudes more than, than when we presented him two adopted grandsons of color. That, you know, that took him 20 years ahead.
Thank you Pastor Sims, your time is up.
We all need to adopt everyone else as our family.
Thank you.
I just need to say for the record that I am representing my organization, the California President for Black Women Organized for Political Action, BAWAPA, and I needed to say that and acknowledge our chapter president, Sherayla Nicholson. Thank you.
Please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes as well.
Matthew Gendian, 1213 North Carolina Avenue, employed at 5340 North Campus Drive. I too was hesitant to come and speak today because I really wanted to listen and hear the pain, but I was moved and feel that I need to stand with brothers and sisters who experience it directly. As a white male, as a professor, as an educator, as an Orthodox Christian and ordained deacon, as a father, as a member of our collective human family, and thus a brother to many of those who have been marginalized, I am offended and angered by the remarks of Councilmember Brettafield. But I am not surprised by the politicized rhetoric that attempts to play to a specific base in order to curry favor. I realize that these are evidence that we live in different realities in the same country, in the same city. When 43% of whites believe that they don't experience white privilege, while at the same time 92% of African-Americans feel that they do, we clearly live in two different realities. I am glad that we are speaking up and standing up and having a public discussion about the divisiveness and derisive comments. Finally, I want to say that the true measure of love of God, or love of country, or love of humanity is not based on whether or not one stands for a national anthem, as we heard was penned by a slaveholder who didn't believe in the freedom of everyone, even though that's the last line of it. It's, it's, the true measure is but why the person is standing, or why they are not standing, and even more importantly, how one speaks to and treats his or her neighbor, and especially the least of these, on a daily basis. That's the measure.
Mr. White, welcome, please give us your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Japal White.
You'll have two minutes.
Can you guys hear me? Just Japal White, 6434 West Renwood Lane, member, councilmember Brandell's district. I just want to drive home a point. Uncle Shawn was up speaking about my grandfather, my great uncle, but my Uncle Shawn is the first relative in my family born with all of his constitutional rights. The second is my brother who's eight years older than I am. So this issue of racism and the history of the country runs deep in our family. My grandfather Riggins, his uncles were slaves. His grandfather was a slave. My great-grandmother Effie Riggins, who lived on O'Neil in Fink White neighborhood, her brothers were slaves. And I sat at her house and drank tea and mowed her lawn, and her brothers were slaves. So for us, it's highly offensive for you to take the position that you took, because all these people out here have a very painful story about being Americans. And I'll leave you with this, my mother always told us that African-Americans are the greatest patriots, simply because when this country did not love us, we still love this country.
There's anyone who hasn't filled out the yellow card and wishes to speak, please come forward. Please give us your name and address for the record, you'll have two minutes.
My name is Esther Delahay, I'm at 1130 East Franklin Avenue. I too was just here to support my neighbors today, but I too need to just stand in agreement with them. I just want to say that I too was brought up in a home where the statistics that you read were, were the dominant narrative in my home. But in the last probably 15 years of my life, I have opted in to listening to a different narrative and understanding more of our true history and more of what's really happened. So I want to invite you into that, to do the hard work as a white person, to know what is true and why things are the way they are today, and not just opt with the easy, with the dominant narrative, and take that as truth. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council? Please come forward. Okay, at this time, we will close public comment and return to the city council dais. I have two council members punched up, Member Brettafield has requested to speak last, Member Soria? Or did you already speak? Okay. Okay, Member Brettafield.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming, for your candid comments, for your honest comments, for your heartfelt comments. There's no question, I heard a lot of important things and a lot of painful things today, and I certainly felt it and feel it. I do want to thank Councilmember Baines. We sat down for a two-hour meeting, we talked straight to each other, very straightforward. It was at times emotional for, for both of us. And frankly, you know, when we were in our meeting and he said to me that the words hurt him, it pained me, because when I said the words, I didn't think it was going to have that kind of effect. And clearly it did, and clearly it has for many of you. And he and I have said we're going to work together, talk some more, and hopefully he and I can, can maybe build some bridges in our community, I certainly hope so. I also want to thank Pastor Kreiner, Pastor Lewis, and Deacon Wiley, Bishop Westbrook's. We had our meeting too. It was also another difficult meeting for me. It was informative for me, it was educational for me, and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody who said all of their words, because I know it was honest and it was from your heart. I want to share a little bit about why I made the comments that I did, and you can disagree with it, but I want to at least share with you my experience and why I did. You know, you alluded to, I'm a veteran, and that's something that matters a great deal to me, as it does to many of you, and have family members who served yourself. I was a Navy lieutenant, I served with men and women of all backgrounds, all races, all religions. I served three years on active duty, and I personally, personally came to understand the tremendous sacrifice that all veterans make so that we enjoy all the freedoms we have today, like meeting today and sharing our views and disagreeing and maybe agreeing on some points, but that's the beautiful freedoms we have. We can talk and dialogue like we did today. And after my naval commitment, I returned back to Fresno. I wanted to continue serving veterans, because I love veterans. And I began working for the VA, and I have been working at the VA for the last 26 years. I worked there every week. I've helped and continue to help veterans that served in World War II, in the Korean War, Vietnam War. I run Vietnam PTSD groups, who served in Iraq and Afghanistan. I work with male and female veterans, African-American veterans, Hispanic-Americans, white Americans, Asian, I mean, veterans, all veterans. The commonality that our veterans have is obviously love of country. And I see their sacrifice for this country every day. They've lost body parts, they have damage to their bodies, they have medical problems, many medical problems. I'm intimately involved with Vietnam vets, and they're suffering from Agent Orange. They have families that have sacrificed a tremendous amount for their service. They have post-traumatic stress disorder, and I work with that every week. So two weeks ago, I was moved by the, what was going on in the NFL. And as a veteran, and somebody who loves our country, which I've, people have alluded to, I said, I, I found the kneeling by the players and owners disrespectful to the veterans and disrespectful to our country. And for me, that was something that I just felt like I had to say. I don't agree with it, I didn't agree with it, but I defend their right to protest. That's their First Amendment right, and I will defend that right. But I don't have to accept that we can talk about it and disagree, and I do. I also spoke about some issues that the players and owners were protesting. And I know and have heard, and before you came here, and certainly have heard today, how painful my words were, and I can assure you, that was never, ever my intent. You know, as a psychologist, my work has always been about working and healing people and healing wounds, certainly not creating them or pulling off scabs from old wounds, which clearly I did. And so I want to assure you, that was not my intent, and for the pain that I've caused, I sincerely apologize. Did not mean to do that, and it was never, ever my intent. Now, I of course know that racism still exists. And if it in any way implied that I don't believe racism exists, I mean, I think there's some things I'm going to show you that I fully understand racism exists. And it was alluded to, in our local school district, we've just seen some students posting on social media some very horrendous images of slavery, and I condemn that. Racism in any form, whether it's covert, whether it's overt, is repugnant. It's disgraceful. It must always be rejected. And that is why on August 12th, eight weeks ago, and you can see it here, I posted on my Facebook page what took place in Charlottesville, Virginia. Now, nobody asked me to do that. I spoke out about the white supremacists being in Charlotte, Virginia, and I wrote, disgusting, sickening, and despicable. I condemn white supremacists and all hate groups which are based on racism and bigotry. Our great country is about freedom, opportunity, free speech, not racism and hatred and violence. And I call for the swift justice for these, for the violence and these crimes committed by the white supremacists. Now, that's what I did, that was in my heart. That was before my speech two weeks ago. And on the, on the back, Pastor Kreiner thanked me for it. And I didn't know Pastor Kreiner at the time, but I greatly appreciated the fact that he did mention that, it meant a lot to me. And two to three weeks ago, only two to three weeks ago, I stood with our Hispanic community, and I denounced former Maricopa County Sheriff Joe Arpaio, because he racially profiled Hispanic people, and he abused his powers as a sheriff. And he was sued over and over because he went after his political opponents. Now, my party invited him here to Fresno, and I said, no. Even though I support my party, I don't support this decision. So I stood against somebody that I believe engaged in racist policies, and I stood with the Hispanic community, and I'm proud that I did. Now, my record and history, both as a council member today and when I served before, and as a professional psychologist for the last 30 years, has always been about making a positive difference in our city and community. I appreciate all the feedback today. It's been painful for me to hear it, because I never want to cause people pain, and obviously I have. I have. And I'm going to utilize that feedback as we continue to work together, build bridges, improve people's lives, and improve our city. And again, additionally, Councilmember Beans and I have committed to continue our honest dialogue and to work together. Now, this has been one of the most difficult days, if not the most difficult day I've ever served. To realize for me that I've caused this much pain is painful for me. I am, believe it or not, a very introspective guy. It's what I do. I mean, it's about looking at history. It's about looking at people's behavior. It's always about trying to help people. And, you know, one of the things my, my wife has commented on is that when I get feedback from people, no matter how critical, I listen. I take a look. And I recognize that I caused some real divisions, and I see that there's a lot of deep wounds, racist wounds, present and past, that I've kind of pulled the scab off. And I've not walked in your shoes. I'm not a black man, and I can't fully understand your experience because of that. I can understand what it means to be prejudiced, and somebody have prejudice against you. I grew up Jewish. I would certainly experience that. But I'm not a black man, and you're right, and you've said that. That's very true. But my words are never intended to be something other than what you experienced. And maybe that's because we have very different experiences. But I can assure you, it's not because of racist inclination or anything else. Again, I think my record demonstrates who I am. So I want you to know that I hear you, and I understand how painful my words were. I am sorry that it caused you pain, and from this point forward, I will be much more aware of those kinds of comments. I will be working with your community and with Councilmember Baines, as well as other people. And I will continue to be a positive force and to unify people. That's what I've always done. That's my history. And I have a long history of it, and I'm proud of it. And I'm proud of the work with veterans, and you're right. And sir, you mentioned about some of the comments that were made against Mr. McCain. I thought they were outrageous. But I think a lot of things that sometimes are said are outrageous. And, you know, his, his service should never have been denigrated. The man's a war hero. And so we go forward. I intend to go forward, and I hope we can all move forward together, and that's, that's what I intend to do. So again, I thank you for all of what you said, painful as it was for me to listen, but I listened to every word you said, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council. At this time, that concludes the morning session of our council meeting, and we'll be back at two o'clock to continue. Thank you all for coming.
Council, are we going into closed session directly after lunch?
Yes, immediately at two o'clock. We'll be heading into closed session.
So closed session will consist of potential litigation, City versus Esparza, existing litigation, Hernandez and Sweet case, and also existing litigation, the North Central Fire case.
Sir, you have two minutes. Give us your name and address. For the record, you have two minutes.
My driver's license, B-7529365, California ID, oh, no, California driver's license. And I have some penal codes that I narrated when I was a little kid that got placed into the Darren's book, and I was revising it. I'm going to put it in a police report with Kay White, Officer Kay White, so that way I can get my money for having everything processed that was embezzled this way mentally, that output. And the study, there's a study on mentally that we did when I was, in 1983, or 1982, September 9th, and over mammals with sound waves being detected with technology to see what they're really saying. So I just wanted to let you be informed that that's what I'm doing right now.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and file it with Kay White, either today or tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, we have quorum. And let's, we finished consent calendar, and I think we can begin with scheduled council hearings and matters. The ten o'clock item, consider text amendment application, and this is Darm.
Good afternoon, Council President Olivier, members of the council. The text amendment before you is a very simple text amendment that was initiated by this body in order to shift the burden of liability for the installation of security and electric fences to the owner of the fence as opposed to the property owner. So that is the only change that is made, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have, let's go out to the public. We have one yellow card, Michael, from Electric Guard Dog. We'll call that one next. Michael Pate. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Member Capriolio, are you punched up for this item?
I am, thank you. I just had some concerns about the indemnification process. So in, in my world, I've seen indemnification clauses, and the person that executes the indemnification has about eighty dollars to his name. And so when the indemnification project comes forward, he says, here's my eighty bucks, that's all I got, and then the city gets stuck with the balance of it. So my question is, in the permit process, do we have an indemnification part that says we need three million dollars worth of insurance to secure this electric fence?
We do. We do. As a matter of fact, as that section of the code is currently written, it requires that a covenant be executed that has to be approved by our risk department that specifies the levels of indemnity insurance and liability. I believe it's one and two million dollars. And, and the proposed text amendment would change the requirement from a covenant to an agreement, which is more binding and has more teeth.
Right.
So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, it did. Thank you. I just want to make sure we don't get these eighty-dollar deals. Too many of those around the city can't afford that, so thank you.
Member Brandow? Is anyone else? Member Soria? No? All right, the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Okay. And the item passes unanimously. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Now, the next item. Let's go ahead and do the special meeting right now for police. This is actions pertaining to lease agreement for Northwest District Police Station, and this is the Police Department.
The item that you have before you is to, it's an action item pertaining to a lease agreement that needs to be approved. And number one is to adopt finding of categorical exemption of the California Environment and Quality Act guidelines. But second is, is that approve or authorize the chief of police to execute a, an agreement with Amy Winepress LP for commercial space lease for our new Northwest Policing District Station. Just by way of background, we have been in the Northwest District Crime, our Northwest District Station on Dakota and Hughes for approximately twenty years. And we have outgrown that facility, but more importantly, when we realigned the district boundaries for the five policing districts, the Northwest District Station became part of the Central. And so there was an effort underway on the part of the city to find a location further north in Northwest Fresno. We have been able to locate that facility and enter into an agreement, or at least conceptually, for ten thousand two hundred and forty square foot facility. The, the lease on that is a dollar thirteen per square foot. The reason the lease is so low is that the city is making an agreement with the builder to pay for the tenant improvements up to five hundred thousand dollars upfront. And again, this is a, will be a ten-year lease. And then there's a, on top of the dollar and thirteen per foot is thirty-seven per square, thirty-seven cents per square foot for common area maintenance. And so we are hopeful that the council approves this item, and then we are able to have construction begin, the remodel, in hopes of being in the facility sometime in March of 2018, thereabouts. And the second piece, I think that's important on this, is that we had received a notice from our current landlord over on Hughes that there would be a increase in rent, and that rent was going from seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars a month to fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars per month, so about a two hundred and fifteen percent increase. So we're asking for council to authorize this agreement.
Thank you, Chief. Let's go out to the public at this time. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to council. Member Brandow, you're punched up first.
And Chief, you and I spoke last week about this real briefly, and you kind of walked me through it, the tenant improvements. All of those situations have been addressed and taken care of. There's a pathway?
Yes. Fortunately, city manager has worked very closely, as well as assistant city manager Rudd. It's hard to say. But they have worked through those details with Mr. Zinkin's folks, and I don't know if we have a representative here from them, but all of those items have been worked through.
Perfect. Okay.
All right, then I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Screen is clear with no other council members punched up. Is there any opposition to this agenda item? Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Okay. All right, we're finished with timed items and almost finished with our meeting. Let's go to general administration. Item 3A, actions pertaining to Fresno County Adult Compliance Team Agreement with the City of Fresno. This is also the Police Department.
The, the item that you have before you is an action item, requires the approval of three areas. One is to approve an agreement for reimbursement for four police officers, Fresno police officers, and a crime analyst, and that agreement is between the City of Fresno and, and the County of Fresno. And those four officers and the analysts would be assigned to our multi-agency gang enforcement consortium. The second is to approve a position authorization resolution for those four sworn police officer positions and one crime analyst. And then last is to approve the AAR, Annual Appropriation Resolution, for nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And by way of background, back in, in 2011, the state of California passed what's called the Public Safety Realignment Act, and that was AB 109, which shifted responsibility for supervision and as well as incarceration for many of the inmates that had previously been adjudicated at the state level, for those to be housed or supervised at the local level. And that shifting of responsibility caused us to create what's called a Community Corrections Partnership Board. That board decides how to utilize funds that are provided by the state of California to local jurisdictions to offset the impact of AB 109 on local communities. And we initially placed a police officer that was fully funded in the act, in the Accountability Compliant Team, again, fully funded by these dollars. In November of 2016, we added a sergeant and two additional police officers, again, fully funded by the, by the county from state dollars. And now, we have approached the Community Corrections Partnership Board to add four additional police officers and a crime analyst to be placed into our multi-agency gang enforcement consortium that are dealing with county-wide gangs. And the reason is simple. There are about twenty-seven hundred of these individuals in Fresno County that are on AB 109 supervision or mandatory supervision. Of those, at any given time, there's about seven hundred and fifty of them that have warrants, outstanding warrants where we're looking for them. The Accountability Compliance Team seeks those individuals out. But what we have found is that a significant number of these people are in gangs. In fact, eighty percent of those that are under AB 109 supervision at the local level are in a gang. About eighty percent of those live in the City of Fresno. And of those individuals, there is a recidivism rate, meaning that they are convicted of a new offense about fifty percent of the time over a two-year period, which means there's about nine hundred and seventy new offenses created by these individuals. And so the officers and the crime analysts are the ones who are going to deal with those out of magic. And so that's the, what we're asking to be approved. There is no fiscal impact to the city at this time, as obviously it'd be a hundred percent funded. And in the, in the future, should those dollars go away, just like they would with any grant, then a decision would have to be made whether or not to retain those, those positions or absorb them through attrition.
Thank you, Chief. We've got to the public now. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and return to the council dais. First council member punched up is Member Brandow.
I got all my questions answered, so I'll make a motion to approve. Go get him, Chief.
I have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this motion? Seeing none, it passes unanimously with Member Soria absent. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Item 3C, the workshop regarding the asset team. This quarterly status report has been postponed, and I'll get folks the date of that presentation for a next agenda item. Moving now to item 3D, actions related to updating water conservation measures. Mr. Escada? Oh, and then the airport, the airport item. We're going to skip. Airport staff is just a few moments away.
Thank you, Council President, City Council. Today, we want to bring you amendments to the Fresno Municipal Code for Urban Water Conservation and Excessive Water Use. These are, we talked about this, I believe, in May. We brought to your attention that we were going to need to make some adjustments to the ordinance based on some things that the governor's been working on, his conservation as a way of life. That's his program that he's launching statewide. He's been directing State Water Resources Control Board to make a number of, that were temporary during the drought, permanent. Lot of legislative action related to this as well, so there may be some additional changes, but we thought it was important to go ahead and get this caught up and reconciled with the current understanding of what the governor's orders are to the Water Resources Control Board and where we are with the legislative process. So we're asking for these five things today, four things today. Adopt a negative declaration prepared for environmental assessment number EA 17014 dated August 11th, 2017. We did this, noticed this twice. A bill for introduction where we're going to amend the Fresno Municipal Code, the sections, section 6501, 6502, and 6520, related regulations of urban water conservation and excessive water use. The excessive water use is one that was specifically called out by the governor, is something that we have to, all water agencies have to have. A resolution amending our water shortage contingency plan, the stage one, stage two, stage three, we're making a modification to that. And then resolution 534, amendment to the Master Fee Resolution, number 8420, adopting a new schedule of fines associated with urban water conservation and excessive water use in the conditions of service work for public utilities department section. So these are the things we're... So these are the things we're asking council action on today. Really what we're tucking at doing here is adopting an excessive water use as required by Water Code subsection 366, there was a very specific thing related to that. Contingency plan, our enforcement penalties, and water conservation measures. There were some water conservation previously that were discretionary of the council. Again, the governor's directed the Water Resources Control Board to move some of those into permanent, so in our ordinance, we're making those permanent.
We have a motion, a second, and a third. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to the dais. We have a motion and a second, and the screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, the item carries unanimously.
Thank you very, very much.
Members Soria absent. Okay, let's go to the next item. This one, we're going to go back and do item 3B from airports, actions pertaining to taxiway reconstruction project. Kevin.
Council President, Council, good afternoon. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. Sorry I'm late, had to help one of the airlines get the bags off, but it got done.
You see the irony in the airport running late?
Yeah.
It suits you, it's okay.
The item before you is part of our, we have a, we have a five-year capital plan, this current fiscal year through fiscal year '22, about $105 million. This is next up on the list, just got a grant from the FAA, and this will reconstruct one of the last major pieces on the airfield, the parallel taxiway on the other side beating SkyWest and the fire attack base and others. And we're ready to go on this project, so if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thanks.
I have two comments, Council President. Thank you for last night, the honor flight. Your team did a magnificent job. It was a moving event as it always is. Those veterans are truly amazed and they are so happy that the airport is fixed the way it is for them to return. So thank you for that and a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second. So we have a motion and we have a second. Wait, we better go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, return to council. We have a motion, a second. Member Brettafeld.
Yeah, quick question. So the taxiway, I was just looking at it because obviously interested with these taxiways, that's that long taxiway all the way down? All the way down the runway, on the one side of it?
It's full length, all the way basically from where Dakota and Chestnut is, all the way back towards Clovis Avenue on the other side of the airfield. Cargo ramp, SkyWest maintenance facility, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, it passes unanimously with Members Soria and Brandow absent. And I think we have a workshop from parks, and this will be our final item of the day. Oh, no, there's also 4B. So let's go ahead and do 4A, this is the, oh, just kidding, we have a couple things. 3E, Parks Master Plan Workshop.
Yeah, so we got, no, I don't want the clicker, but just wanted to have it up so we don't, aren't messing around with it. All right, well, good afternoon, Council. As Council President indicated, this is a workshop in the draft, or administrative draft, Fresno Parks Master Plan. As we all know, the impetus of this Parks Master Plan was driven in large part by the adoption or the updating of the City Fresno's general plan, as well as a lot of concern and energy by a diverse group of community stakeholders who were concerned and are still concerned over the lack of green space in our community. As we all know, Fresno ranks almost last. We've come up a little bit on the Trust for Public Lands Annual Survey for the amount of green space and open space that's available to our community. This Parks Master Plan, though, is a little bit different than previous iterations of Parks Master Plans because it does not necessarily include a bunch of pretty pictures of projects that might happen or could happen, or would be proposed to be constructed. But rather, this plan is a very comprehensive and in-depth look as to the current condition of our parks, the ongoing cost of ownership or maintenance of our parks, the level and type of programming that our Parks Department provides, and as well as where parks are located. As you will soon see, that there is a lot to consider under this plan, but more importantly, this plan will point out what we already know, that there is a lack of green space in this community. But this is not a zip code-driven deficiency, this is a community-wide issue. And at some point in time, and at the conclusion of this presentation, this report will go out, this plan will go out to the community, at some point in time, the community was going to have to, quite honestly, have a very frank conversation amongst itself as to what its priorities are. The numbers you will see today, some of them are not new. Some of the other numbers and the other liabilities or costs or needs of the Parks Department are probably a little sobering. But I also would add that this is no different than what we have seen with some of the other assets that we own, whether it's parking or a stadium. And quite honestly, if I was standing here, I could make the same arguments for our public safety departments as well. So with that, I'm going to hand the presentation over to our consultant, WRT, and Mr. John Gibbs.
John?
Thanks, Bruce. And is there a clicker, or should I just? You have a clicker. I would love a clicker. Greetings, Council. It is, it's a pleasure to be launching this Parks Master Plan, which has been in process now for just over a year. There's a lot of familiar faces up on the dais, and having worked with many of you over this time period. But tonight, we're going to be going out to the community and we're going to see a lot more familiar faces, a lot of effort, a lot of energy that's gone into this plan. I think we've captured the vision, the aspirations of the community and of this, of the city. But also, I think as Bruce has said, there's an important and some sometimes sobering reality check that this is, that this plan is also providing. I'm going to go through a presentation to just introduce at a high level, but drilling in at a couple key facts, what this overall document says. It's a 300-page document, so you're going to be glad that I'm doing this in about 20 slides and about 15, 20 minutes. So why we do a Parks Master Plan, you know, this is a, this is a tool for you all to manage, operate your park system, understand what your priorities are, and to set some really clear strategic directions moving forward. The last plan was accomplished in about 1989, that's a number of years ago, and it's time to refresh. We have a growing city, it's a changing city, and we need to adapt our policies to who we currently are. It's also worth noting that the park conditions today require us to really put a spotlight on the services that we're providing, and again, be strategic. Our engagement process utilized both key stakeholders, and we had a list of about 50 that we stayed in touch with, and pretty regular participation from about 35, 40 individuals that were really committed to parks to, and to this community. We also had very large community meetings and much broader participation, including an online survey that was completed by over 800 individuals. We both held meetings within various locations, but we also went out to the community, went out to each council district, we were in each of your districts, engaging your communities, as well as mobile workshops out at a number of sites. We understood the needs of the community, we developed recommendations, and those are really embodied in the master plan. Just as I mentioned, three to four stakeholder meetings, numbers of workshops, accomplished these workshops in three different languages, that was the first time I've done it in three languages, two is pretty common. But, you know, great, we broke through language barriers to engage the widest community possible. So just to put a point on the assessment and the findings, and really the question of, so how are we doing? We looked into finances and how the parks were being operated, we looked at the conditions of parks, we looked specifically at acreage, and we looked for gaps, gaps both in access, gaps where there just are no parks. And really, you know, we were not just interested in the quantities, but we were really interested in the quality of our parks. So within the finances and the operations, there was just a really key point, which is it's easy to want to invest in a new park, and you know, you build a nice park, you put some money into it, but you got to maintain that park as well, and we're not doing a great job with maintaining our parks. But the thing that we were really missing in our process was budgeting ahead for the replacement of those investments. And I think you heard from Mike Svetz, from Prozwell, one of my team members, who likened it to buying the new car, running that car, but then not changing the oil in the car. And what happens to the car? We don't, we don't get our value out of that automobile, and you know, it's a pretty common analogy, and we're having trouble with that, just with our park system. So this plan recognizes the total cost of ownership. So just some of those facts. We certainly found a department in a city that's really doing the best it can with the resources available to it. And we saw that in the pride that people, that people took, the value of those services that were provided. But it was pretty clear that there's some real limited resources that that team is working with. That, and just in terms of maintenance, we really need about $5 million additional per year to maintain the parks that we have today. So we're already, we're already in that hole, and we see that, we see that in the parks. We see that, that the cars' oil just isn't being changed, and that's, so we're seeing that when we went out and we did our assessments. In terms of lifecycle replacement, the third bubble on the diagram I showed a minute ago, we looked at the total asset value of the park system, we looked at what really needed to be replaced in about a 10-year cycle, and really that's due now, $112 million. It's a, it's a big number. Spread out over 10 years and assuming the $5 million, that's really about a $17 million annual budget increase that's needed to maintain and operate and plan, do proper financial planning for the park system that we have today. We looked at acreage of the park system, and our general plan has set a goal of five acres of parkland per thousand population. We're at about a little over 1,000 existing acres. We need about double that today, and as we grow in the future, we need about 1,700, 1,800 acres. So that's, and that's just the quantity. Now, it's worth noting that every time we add, every time we add acreage, that's adding about 10,000 to 15,000 per acre annually to maintain, to maintain that new parkland. When we went out and did our assessments and we visited every park, and we filled out a pretty detailed form, looking at it, kicking its tires, and we found that about 20% of the parks were in pretty good condition, majority, 50%, were in fair condition, and 30% of the parks really came out in a poor condition. And that's a really important fact as we look forward to developing strategies for We mapped where there are amenities in parks throughout the city, and what we could begin to find were that there were, there were areas where there were no parks serving the community, not within a half a mile distance to that park. And so this sort of mapping and this kind of data becomes really, really beneficial as we plan improvement strategies, as we try to identify, how do we overcome those park deserts? This is the kind of mapping that's in the document and is going to be really helpful to be strategic moving forward. As we were engaging our community, we heard a lot of really great feedback. We heard about the kinds of park programs that folks really wanted, we heard about the kinds of facilities that were missing in parks, simple things, picnic areas, community gardens, dog parks. We heard a lot about soccer and the need for additional soccer fields within the park system. And certainly, anytime it was, anytime over summer, we heard a lot about swimming pools and splash pads. Another statistic that was, I think that was telling, was interesting, was that as we asked residents as part of our survey what they thought of the current park system, how was it serving them? And 22% said that the park system was in poor condition. We did have, ideally, we had about 6, 6% was 34, so about 40% said it was excellent and good, but actually about 60% said it was, that the park system was not so good. That same group of people said, hey, we really value our parks, we really value our park system. And 50% of those that we surveyed were willing to support additional funding for parks. It's also an important question to ask, right? It's not just, you know, do you want more, but are you willing to pay for it? And we did have some positive traction in that regard. So this plan has to also be pretty strategic. So what do we do with all this information? And we really wrestled this. We wanted those shiny objects, and as Bruce described, the last plan early talked about, you know, lots of pretty pictures. There are pretty pictures in this document. But we were pretty clear about three strategies. Improve what you have. We're already at a deficit for our park system, let's increase our funding and take care of what we have. It's really the best way to deliver quality parks to this existing community. But in addition, let's close the gaps, and there's some creative ways to do that. Sometimes it's by proving access to parks, sometimes it's about adding, adding additional parks or urban greening strategies in those areas. It's also about securing the parks, that we have parks today that not only are in poor condition, but, but people feel unsafe there. There's activities going on that are counter to what you want to have going on in a park. So we got to solve, solve that issue as well. So some of those strategies, improving what we have, just one example, Rotary Sports Center, just taking the existing park, putting money into it, making the fields work better, making the buildings work better, making things look better and more attractive, and the existing park really doesn't look like a place you'd want to go. The other idea is to close the gaps, and certainly we can do that through acquiring additional parkland, but that's expensive, and that's going to require additional maintenance dollars. What we really found was a key strategy of targeting existing school sites and existing basin sites, and through joint use agreements, better leveraging our dollars to provide those amenities to the community. And we've done this with a pilot project with 16 schools throughout Fresno, and that this master plan suggests expanding that, building upon that in order to provide additional acreage. We can, we can add an additional 400 or so acres just through, just through Fresno Unified School District. So there's the 410 acres that we might be able to get, and our mapping begins to show which schools might be even of the greater priority to target, so that we are, mapping then starts to show better distribution of parks. We looked at identifying flagships and priority parks, and I think this is going to be the subject of a place where you all will want to be looking at the plan and community will be looking at it as well. So it's not just to say that we've got poor-conditioned parks and we've got to make those a little bit better, but it's to say that for equity across council districts simply, let's also identify a couple of parks in each district that we just want to have those in really good shape. And so we've taken a stab at what some of those might be, we've selected three parks based on some distribution, based on the current popularity of those parks. These are pretty good workhorse parks. Let's just say, at a minimum, if we can get three in each council district in the near term, set up, funded, apply for grants, and get them, get them working, this is our initial list of those parks. You guys will want to look, look into that a little bit further. Not to say there's not a lot of other priorities.
So, did you just say three in each district?
That, that one way to look, yes, one recommendation is to identify three parks in each district just to make sure those parks are.
What if you don't have more than three parks in your district? I actually have one of the most deficient, you know?
Definitely. It was, yes, there were, there were three parks within your district.
And that's it?
I think that includes that $11 million park, didn't it?
And so, yeah, I think this is, this is, I think this is going to be a place of some discussion that, and this is just to say that at a minimum, we got to have three. It's not to say that we don't all deserve, we don't need 10, and it's not to say that some districts have 10 parks and some districts have three, but we've got at least. some districts have 10 parks and some districts have three, but we've got at least, we're actually, I think, in such a state that we don't even have three. So let's at least get three in each district, then we've got to build more across the board. And so it's, I thank you for your point. In addition, there's urban greening strategies that we've identified, everything to do with Tree Canopy, and whether that's through CAL FIRE grants and the work with Tree Fresno to expand the benefits that parks provide out into the communities. This is through additional grant opportunities. It's not quite the same as having a park, but these are additional things that we can do. Bicycle access, community gardens, just beautification projects within a district. These are additional ways to help close some of the gaps in our park deficiencies. Terms of securing the parks, we really recommend programming our parks. Get out there, have parks set up, whether it's mobile activities, movies in the parks, these sorts of events that activate our parks and bring people to them. We gotta go out of our way to make our parks more vital and better used. So just in terms of the document, it has these chapters. It's a very comprehensive document. This is its cover. I'm just going to highlight a couple of pages within it, but this is going to be available now for you to review, delve into, and give us feedback and comments on it.
Before you move on to that, I've got a quick question. Under the expand the school joint-use facilities-
Yes.
I know we had some conversations on that, and actually, myself and the city manager had a chance to work on the first phase of that. So were there areas that were identified as priority during your community meetings, or was it just kind of that overall direction, that we should just do more of them? I'm trying to get a feel for what that led to.
Yeah, so I think, you know, definitely that it's the right direction to go down, because it has immediate benefit at a reduced cost, and it's working. We've already done a pilot. Our mapping identifies which areas we would have the most benefit from that. And so through our mapping, we're able to identify where are those existing park deserts, where are there a lack of resources, and therefore, which school sites might be more, might be targeted if there was going to be an additional first round.
Okay, great. And I'm trying to get that conversation early on, because I know that over at the school district, they're doing a big build-out, and one of the projects we worked on was Roosevelt. And the really great part about that is that the plaza was actually designed to have folks come in on the evenings and the weekends, and so I think if we start that conversation early, they can design that in a way where we do have accessibility to restrooms, drinking fountains, you know, maybe some recreational areas too as well. I like to see some of that language included in the parks master plan and start the relationship building over at the school district as well.
Absolutely. There's a lot of shared benefit, and in fact, there's many places where there's, A, there's a neighborhood with no parks, yet it has a great elementary school full of green grass. That would make, you know, an obviously open a gate. Other places where there's an existing park, and then there's a school next door, and sometimes you have duplicate resources, or sometimes it's, well, there's no basketball court in this park, but there's one right across the fence. And so we have some shared resources there to definitely tap into. So within the document, it has a section about the vision. This is much of the aspirational feedback and goals that we heard from the community very early on in the process, number of subjects from equity and health and safety. So we've identified those elements. Here's another page from the document that just talks about programming. It talks about the kinds of programming that might be most suitable, from the feedback that we've heard and from national trends. We talk about the cost analysis of some of these programs as well within the document. We talk about park standards and really setting a baseline for what a park is and what it should be. A pocket park. We have some pocket parks in the town that are very small and actually don't have any amenities. We need to make sure that every time we are building a park, it's complete and it has a minimum set of amenities. And so we've articulated that through a series of standards. There's extensive mapping, so that if we didn't answer all the questions within our timeline and within what we were all thinking about today, there's really important analysis and tools for folks to answer the questions that we're going to have tomorrow within this document. And you have a fabulous staff that has been excellent to collaborate with, and so all of these tools are handed over to your staff and really developed jointly with them. We've developed guidelines for parks relative to public safety, sustainability, a number of other topics. This is where there's more of the fine print within the document. We've developed an expenditure plan. This is not a capital improvement plan, but this is getting a little specific about taking all of our existing parks and putting them into three categories. These are the parks that we need to maintain, we need to plan for life cycle, and we have some dollars associated with that. We have another series of parks that have been identified for strategic improvements. Maybe we need to take out this old, broken wading pool, and we need to put in a splash pad. We're changing the experience, we're targeting improvements to those parks. There's a price tag associated with that. And a third category of parks are to scrape them and start over again, and work with the community to build a master plan to really be strategic about identifying the kinds of amenities that that community is going to need and wants. And there's a number of parks that it's not about painting a bench, it's that there is no bench. We need to really start over and build up this park, and those will be brand-new experiences within the city. So we've identified a series of those as well. Bruce said that we tried to avoid pretty pictures, but we did put a couple in here just to highlight a few key themes. We developed some additional concepts around, one was a school site that could be joint use, and how might we enhance that school site to make it better serve its neighborhood as well as the children that are in that school, and that's within one of those park desert areas. The example on screen here would be the idea of a joint-use facility at Mariela Brown in southwest Fresno, replacing the existing pool and the existing community center buildings with new pool, new community center, and done in a joint-use agreement. So these are concepts that fall within and to illustrate many of the concepts within the master plan. Moving forward from today, we're going to be meeting with community members tonight in order to launch this, launch this master plan. There's going to be a public comment period, and we're going to have lots of ways that folks can provide responses to us, by phone, by email, as well as through the web. So there'll be this public comment period. Tonight's our kickoff and our launch for that. We'll be back before you on October 14th, having reviewed those comments, incorporated those comments, and so we'll be back for hopefully an adoption hearing at that point. Hard copies are going to be available here, I think, beginning Monday and early next week. Hard copies will be placed in libraries, et cetera, for the public to review. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Did we already get hard copies delivered?
Monday?
Monday? Not yet? When will we get them? Oh, Monday? Okay, perfect.
So council, you know, this is kind of a little bit of a mixed bag as far as this report, and I can appreciate how this conversation will evolve in the future months. As the presentation, as the plan points out, there's a need to increase the ongoing amount of resources for just continuing maintenance of about $5 million. The life cycle or the amount of money that's needed to bring everything into a state of good repair is well over $110 million, $112 million present value. As time goes on, that number goes up because of inflation. Trying to find $17 million in a general fund that doesn't have $17 million to spend is going to be a challenge. The general plan calls for five acres per thousand, and as the report shows, we would have to go out today and find almost 1,100 acres to meet that goal based on today's population. Now, joint use will get you another 400 acres, which we are continuing to work with at school districts to try to identify new opportunities for that. But a half a million dollars an acre, and a half a million dollars an acre doesn't get you a tot lot or a community center, with a community center. It'll get you maybe a tot lot and some trees and some benches. So the plan, as I said earlier, is a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. It really puts a pin to what this community is going to have to grapple with as far as the balance between maintaining what we have and building new. That $17 million annually does not even include any money for additional programming, and we're not building anything new. We're just maintaining what we already have and bringing it into a state of good repair. This plan affirms that, as I said before, what we already knew, this community lacks sufficient green space for the size and population of Fresno. It affirms some of the strategies of repurposing our existing green spaces, but challenges us to find the resources needed to address those parks that are just so far beyond repurposing that as John indicated, it would probably be better just to scrape the site. One of those parks, for example, is in your district, council member, sorry. The recommendation is that Quigley is in such a state of disrepair, it would probably be best, and pardon the term, if we just scraped the site and started all over. This plan affirms the partnerships that we started with Fresno Unified and Central Unified about a year and a half ago. It encourages us, but also challenges us, to find new opportunities to expand those partnerships with other community stakeholders, maybe the flood control basin, and looking at those facilities as a joint use. The plan also affirms the need for green space pursuant to the general plan, but as I pointed out to John when we were going over, we need 1,100 acres of new green space. What neighborhood or what shopping center do we take out? Because the need is in the central part of Fresno, which is already developed. So which neighborhoods do we take out to build a park? Where do we find the land? And finally, council, I know this council and now Mayor Brand have taken great pride in being the council that stopped kicking the can, a lot of cans that got kicked down the road, to stop kicking those cans and addressing a number of things. But unfortunately, I think this is more like a 55-gallon drum and it's full. So it's going to take a lot more than just this council and this mayor to come up with ways to actually meet some of the needs and goals and opportunities identified in this plan. It's going to require the community, and as I said at the beginning of my presentation, the community is going to have to have a very frank conversation as to what its priorities are and what its future investments will be. Again, $17 million in a general fund that has a lot of other competing priorities. I could stand here and list off a number of priorities, similar priorities in public safety. You just approved a multi-year lease with the Fresno Police Department for a new substation, because they don't really have one. Fire stations have the same problems that our parks have. So we are hopefully optimistic that when this plan gets rolled out, that there are members of this community who are going to come together and realize that this is not something that can be fixed today, and it's not going to be something that can be fixed by simply readjusting priorities within our budget, because there's just not enough capacity within that budget to do that. So that concludes my comments, and I thank you for your time, and we're certainly open to any questions that you may have.
All right. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for the presentation today, and I really, Christina, the meeting that we had yesterday, or was it the day before yesterday, the way time flies, but I really appreciate that. We talked about several things in relationship to parks, and I feel like because of this morning's, the way this morning went, we're a little bit burnt out up here, and I've actually got to leave for a 4 o'clock appointment. But I did want to make a couple of comments so that my colleagues could hear them, and but they're just kind of miscellaneous comments, and they're things that I've talked with the administration about, I've talked with Wilma about them, and with Christina yesterday, is that, so do you guys know the green space that we have all voted on for the school systems? I would challenge you to go out to one of the schools in your district unannounced and kind of see what's really going on out there. One day, this was in the early summer, and I had pictures, but I've lost a cell phone since then, so I can't show you the pictures today, but I guess I ask you to trust me. I had a lady from say, hey, I want to take my kid over to Bullard. Where is the city's activity center? I didn't know, so I went over to Bullard. I said, what time are you going over there? She said about 10:00. I said, it was 9:00, so I said, let me call you back. So I drove over to Bullard. I found our pop-up tent. There was nobody there, only two assistants. So I go, this is wrong, something's going wrong here. So I asked them, you know, what was going on, and they said, yeah, this is pretty much par for the course. Not that many people taking advantage of these activities. So, you know, it's really weird. It hit me on a free Saturday, so I ended up going to Hoover, McLean, Fresno High, and I can't remember the fourth one. I ended up at five schools that day, about 30 minutes at each one, and I found the location, and I went and talked with the, I call them kids, but they're really about 20-year-olds that we hire to run these activity centers. I've got to tell you, there was nobody at any of them. I mean, goose egg. And so I started asking questions. What I did find, on the flip side, is that the swimming pools were packed. So we're really reaching out well on the swimming pools, but I just want my colleagues to know that we haven't, and so I asked a lot of questions like, how about this huge apartment complex across the street? Oh, yeah, we put flyers over there three times. So we've done outreach, the schools are sending home notices, people are getting the notices, at least one year's worth of noticing. And so I've got some concerns about the way that's working out. I am not at the, I'm not in the position where I say we pull the plug on that at all, because I've spoken with Wilma and Christina, and they think we have some options and a little bit, we need to give it a little bit more time, but I want everybody to know that those things are being heavily underutilized right now.
And council member, if I may?
Yeah.
So next week, we actually are presenting a workshop on our weekend recreation and fitness program and all those joint-use sites, and it will show attendance for the green space and the blue space, so that's ready, and we'll be presenting it next Thursday.
Perfect, and you know what? I knew that and forgot about it. Thanks, Wilma. And so the other thing that is on, when we passed the budget, I made a motion to amend the budget that gave each council district $100,000 to spend at your discretion. Do you remember that?
You do.
Yeah. Councilman Capriolio seconded that, and I was really glad to meet with Parks yesterday because we're kind of know in District 2 where we're going, and Christina let me know that they're ready to go. So as soon as we get things figured out for our district, they're ready to pull the trigger, which I'm very happy about that. It's going to be, Bruce, and that's miniscule. We're going to be adding some amenities to some parks, and I know it doesn't scratch the surface of what your presentation was today. But I would like to, I would like, Christina, I would actually like to follow up, and we talked about a follow-up meeting yesterday, but maybe even now that I've seen this, maybe within the next couple of weeks. Oh, I forgot the other thing that I was going to say. I think this is important too, this was interesting too. I was at a conservancy meeting last Wednesday, San Joaquin River Conservancy. I represent the City of Fresno there on that board, and I get there, and on the agenda was City of Fresno Parks. So I go, what's this? Sometimes one of our Parks people comes in and makes a presentation, but really, it was a pitch for a bond to be put on the ballot, okay? And I was a little put off that they made the presentation there prior to coming before council, because we need to make decisions based on the amount of money coming in. So one weird thing that they said is that they went to the mayor of Fresno, and Mayor Brand said that he's not going to take the lead on that, but he would like to defer to former Mayor Swearengen. So, you know, I've been asked to meet with a group that wants to do, I've been asked to meet with that group that wants to put a bond on the ballot measure, and I'm going to try to stay open-minded while I do that because of the huge need that we have in our parks. It's hard for me to talk about being open-minded to a tax, to a tax, but it's a fee, yeah. No, this one's a tax. This one's like a half-cent sale accord.
Can we get a thermometer for Member Brand out, please?
Yeah. So, you know, the need is so great, we have to do something. I'm going to be open to that, but I've heard there's other bond opportunities for the City of Fresno.
We can legalize weed and use the money for parks.
And you're the second council- And you're the second council member today that told me that, that's the answer. Okay?
That's one of the answers.
That's one of the answers. All right.
Part of it.
All right. But apart from those comments, I wanted to thank you for the presentation. And, and I've got to leave now, but I look forward to a follow-up meeting about the Parks Master Plan. So, thank you.
Wait, before you leave, Susan, marijuana.
I just, listen, before you leave, Steve, you know, you're, you're a dear friend. And I just wanted to say thank you for being open. I know that we've talked about the bond issues in the past, and you know, I've always been a proponent of them. But it's encouraging to hear that when presented, you know, some, some evidence and the reality of the things we say up here, you're at least open to hearing what it could look like. Because I think ultimately, if we can get voices like yours at the table, we come out with much better products. So, if there's an opportunity to work together on this, I would, I'd certainly like to work with you on it.
Member Chavez, and then Member Baines.
Question for our consultant. So, on Slide 8, I noticed that you kind of outlined the, the total acreage that's factored into park space. I, I didn't see Callaway Park District or a couple of the pocket parks. So, was this just parks that the city currently runs? Or, or how was that formula figured in? I'm just curious.
Yeah. So, these are just, these are just city acreages.
Okay. Because that number is definitely higher in my district. I have a number of pocket parks, especially in the new developments. There's Callaway Park, and then there's a couple of parks behind our shopping centers. But I was trying to get a little better gauge on, on what the formula was. But that, that makes sense. If it's city-run parks, then they wouldn't, then they wouldn't have shown up there. So, part of the, the conversation that, that we're going to have, and I flagged earlier, the school districts as our potential partners. Have we done any outreach to State Center Community College District? I know that they're going through a really big bond expansion. We're talking about the Southwest campus. I think there's opportunity to leverage resources for them to do a dual joint use. And then also, I wanted to put on your, on your radar, there's a parcel on Peach and Church. It was actually one of the last things I was able to do as a school board member. We purchased those 52 acres. That's going to be a, a big campus on that side. And I think the design work there that I mentioned earlier would fit perfect, perfectly, because across the street story, we actually opened that park, not through the city joint-use agreement, but separately with some of the soccer clubs. And they use that quite a bit. You drive on the weekends there, whether it's, you know, summer, winter, and it's being used heavily. So, I think that has the greatest potential because it's 52 acres. And if we build that, you know, something similar to what Clovis does, where they don't have fences around their, their green space, I think that'd be a good model to incorporate on that. And then, sad to say, see my colleague that left, but I actually had the opposite experience when I went to some of the sites. There were a lot of people using those, those facilities, and that's one of the reasons why I think there's a lot of value in expanding those partnerships. And look, we're not going to be able to do it all. The City of Fresno just can't, can't do it all on its own. We have to really leverage those partnerships and, you know, the flood control, FID, all the different organizations and entities that have these facilities, I think, would be willing to, to partner with us. And we're going to have to. And the, the potentials there, Fresno Unified alone has 120 sites across the city, and each and every one of them have green space within them. And I know, Bruce, was it, was it, did you say that if we, was it additional 400 acres? Was it potential sites or all the, because to me, that's the whole, the whole pie? Or what was that number that you referenced, the 400 acres?
It was a 400 and, I think it was, yeah, 410 acres, and that was just Fresno Unified. And that's only counting the usable parts. That's not necessarily counting the whole campus. That's just
Okay.
where the green space that could be shared.
Got it. That, that ma, that, that makes sense. And I know as we go through our investments with our Recharge Fresno, I know there was discussions, you know, early on about the, the purple pipe and, you know, getting that. I think that would help with the cost. But I will tell you that on the school district's end, and sad to see that my colleague's not here, but one of the reasons why I think people are, are reluctant to, to go, or not so much reluctant, but are cautious about utilizing some of the facilities is, for many years, the school district literally kicked out people out of those schools. And so, a lot of those neighborhoods still have that in the back of their head, that they're not allowed to be on there, which is really ironic because they're paying for it. Their taxpayers paying for, for that facility. So, I think, you know, on the outreach piece, I think we, we should double up on that. I think there's, there's more opportunity there. But I'm, I'm going to want to see some of that language in there, because what I hope will come out of this is that we come up with a template that we can then use to leverage resources, whether it's a, I don't want to use that, that tax word. We'll call it revenue enhancement measure. How about that? And, and then also going after some, some grants with some joint entities, whether it's the school district, whether it's State Center, whether it's flood control. There's going to be a lot of opportunities, and I'm really excited about what this plan's going to outline, because one, it's a reality check of the deficiencies that we have in the park. But two, it's also the opportunity that we will have to make sure that we do address this parks issue long-term. And, and, and you're right. I mean, it is going to out, we're going to need a couple more cohorts of council members up here and some of their administrations. But I think we'll look back at this and say that this was really the beginning when, when we started to value and reinvest more in, in parks and green space. And particularly in the areas that we don't, we don't have that right. Thank you.
And I'll be brief. I, I just want to thank you all for the, the work on this. This is important work. I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. I think that we've been waiting to really see what, what our need is and have it quantified and give us a plan of action. Now, I know we don't necessarily have a plan of action, but we definitely have something to think about. And I'm glad to hear my colleague be open to the idea of a bond. I think, you know, we, we, well, not, not, not you.
No.
I know, not you. I'm not.
I don't know about that.
No. Well, listen, I, I think that all of us all recognize and value parks in this community. Now, we're going to see how much we value it, because now that we have information in front of us, it's, it's time for us to make a plan of action. That's what people elect, that's what people elect us for. We now see what the challenge is. We know how deep the hole is, so to speak. And it's up to us to, to start trying to figure out ways to plug it. So, anyhow, thank you for this work. Work well done. I know this is just a beginning point, and hopefully sometime in the near future, we'll be coming back talking about solutions to the, to this problem. Council President, you hear that? Solutions?
What?
Solutions. We're going to be talking about solutions.
I'm always looking for solutions. That's why I ran for office, Oliver.
Okay. All right. Anyway, thank you, guys.
All right. Member Soria.
I will keep my remarks, but I, again, want to thank staff and our consultant for the, I guess, the draft on the Parks Master Plan. I know that there's been a lot of work, not only by folks here, but also by the community, those folks involved in the various workshops that you guys hosted. So, thank you for all the work that was done to have this come before us. And just excited to see, you know, what kind of feedback we will get with this final proposal that we have in front of us. I did just want to mention, I think, when I met with both staff and the consultant, I mentioned that the partnership with Fresno Unified is great. And then, we started a little, a smaller partnership with Central Unified. I think that there's an opportunity there, which I know that, that has been part of our conversation. I mentioned also previously that, you know, my district is one of the districts with the least amount of park space. And so, I know that there's opportunities, especially in the older neighborhoods, the Tower, Fresno High area. I know that there's not a lot of land available, but I think that we need to be creative. There are some parcels out there, and I'd be happy to kind of sit down to figure out if those are going to be some possibilities. I know that there's also been suggestions by other folks, you know, there's that substation. It's not in my district, but it's still walk, walking distance from the, from my constituents out in the south part of the Tower in Oliver Baines's area. The substation, and it's our land, so figuring out if there's an opportunity there to convert for a park space, if that's something that the neighborhood wants. I know that there's been expressed interest in the last few months. Also, I think that it's perfect timing that we're coming to have this final Parks Master Plan, because the state legislature, this, this legislative session passed the Parks Bond for 2018, which will be before the voters. So, we are going to be ready, which is good. There's going to be $2.25 billion statewide, obviously, but it, it does put us at a competitive aid, you know, space, because we have already a Parks Master Plan. And so, figuring out ahead of time if that is successful, how we can be prepared so that we maximize the opportunity to go after also those state dollars and figure out what we have to do here locally to leverage those dollars, so that we're not only addressing the, the needs that exist in terms of the, the life cycle replacements, which we know are very, very important, but also have a balanced approach with being able to figure out how we construct new parks in a way that we will be able to maintain and operate them for years to come. So, I want to thank everyone for the work that you guys have done. I love parks. I, I believe that this council has been very supportive of, of our parks. That's why we approved the Parks Master Plan money and wanting you guys to bring this forward to us. So, excited about the final product. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Soria. And that concludes our item 3E on the workshop for Parks Master Plan. We now move to City Council, Item 4A, Resolution Amending the Council Residency Act. And this is presented by Council President's Office. And I'm going to turn it over to our learned Madam Clerk to explain how we arrived at this and this fix that was brought to my attention by our clerk. Take it away, Yvonne.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve, and she was just inhaling. So, give us a brief summary.
Basically, all I did was try to make it more concise, because there's certain requirements for candidates, certain requirements for incumbents. And I just wanted my staff to have an easier time sifting through that. So, some of it was duplicated. So, we moved that section and pointed to the previous section for those directions.
Okay. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll return to the City Council and close public comment. We have a motion by Member Capriolio and a second by Vice President Soria. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Item carries 5 to 0. We have moved to Item 4B. This is an agreement with the Southwest Community Development Corporation. This is City Councilmember Baines.
Yes. Thanks, Council President. You, a couple of you guys have called me about this this week, so I'll just give a brief summary. A couple of years ago, we approved these dollars. We rolled them over for the last couple of years, and now it's essentially time to execute the contract with the Southwest Community Development Corporation. This is one-time money for them to help them build capacity and hopefully bring, bring on some part-time staff, so they can get them, kind of get off the ground. The Housing Authority, I believe, is bringing matching dollars to them. But it's been ongoing for a couple of years. So, thank you. I'll second that. I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Member Baines. We have a, a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the City Council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll return to council. There is a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the item carries 5 to 0. Just me and the Democrats. That's just about it. They left me alone with you people.
That's like, that's like a book, me and the Dems.
Me and the Dems.
The Dems and me.
It's okay. I feel, I don't feel triggered. I love you all.
But don't you feel a lot more intelligent?
All right, guys. That does it for this meeting. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. And
Council President, we were going to adjourn.
We are adjourning in memory of the victims of the Las Vegas shooting and also the, the fire victims in Northern California. Thank you all.